I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on Counselor Dedavidas to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. The city of Thorold is situated in treaty land. The land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as Haunty Wantrunk, Haunty Noshi, and Anaxabi, including the Mississauga, the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Matisse, Inuit, people from across Turtle Island that live and work in Niagara today. The city of Thorold stands with all Indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands in which we live.
Thank you, Counselor. Adoption of the agenda. Just a quick note that the Parking Master Plan Update will take place at the next council meeting. Can I get a move on a second or to adopt the agenda? Counselor DeAngelo and Counselor O'Hare, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Adoption of the minutes. Can I get a move on a second or to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025? Counselor Sette and Counselor Decker, are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Mayor's Report. First, I'd like to welcome our new senior planner, Kevin Nun. Welcome to Team Thorold. Where's Kevin? Welcome aboard. On November 21st, I was joined by Fire Chief Terry Dixon, Deputy Fire Chief Mike DeGaspiris, on-ship firefighters, representatives from Enbridge Gas and the Fire Marshal's Public Fire Safety Council at Fire Station 1. Thorold Fire and Emergency Services received 234 combination smoke and carbon monoxide alarms through the Safe Community Project Zero, a public education campaign that will provide more than 14,200 alarms to residents in 75 municipalities across Ontario. Also, we would like to thank Peter Hunter, manager of Castle Building Centre on Highway 20, who donated 18 smoke and carbon monoxide alarms to Thorold Fire and Emergency Services. On November 21st, Deputy Mayor Mike Dedavidas attended the official launch of Coldest Night of the Year 2026. Start Me Up Niagara hosted this event at Table Rock House in Niagara Falls. This annual walk on Saturday, February 28th raises vital funds for organizations serving people experiencing homelessness, hunger, and hardship. On November 22nd, I was joined by Counselor Sette at Thorold South Volunteer Firefighters' Association Station 2 100th Anniversary Dinner. On behalf of city council staff and our community, congratulations on your 100th anniversary. For 100 years, you not only provided exceptional fire and emergency services in Thorold South and beyond, but have also gave back to the community in numerous ways, something that is continuing today. To all those who have served, both living and deceased, and those serving today, we thank you. We thank your families as well, as they are a big part of Station 2's success. On November 25th, I was joined by Counselor Sette, O'Hare, Dedavidas, Regional Counselor Whalen, Vice President Niagara Health Foundation, Chris Green, and Vice President of Green Energy and Technology Centre at Elektra, Jerry Yin, and from Niagara House, Simon Akinsuli, BIA Chair Serge Carpieno, and many others at the tree lighting ceremony, the celebration of lights. This is an annual fundraising campaign run by the Niagara House Foundation. We proclaim the large evergreen tree on the front lawn of Thorold Community Credit Union property as the 2025 Holiday Tree of the City of Thorold. Thank you to the Niagara Health Foundation, Thorold Community Credit Union, Elektra, and the Thorold Downtown BIA for their collaboration in bringing this tree lighting ceremony, the celebration of lights, to the city of Thorold. On November 26th, I was joined by Counselors Dedavidas, O'Hare, Regional Counselor Whalen, city staff, and Positive Living Niagara to raise a flag in recognition of HIV/AIDS Awareness Week, World AIDS Day, and Indigenous HIV/AIDS Awareness Week. Thank you to Positive Living Niagara and all community partners for their continued dedication to providing education, support, and care across Niagara. On November 29th, the annual Thorold Santa Claus Parade brought the community out in record numbers, and the weather cooperated. All councillors participated in one way or another, as well as Regional Counselor Whalen, MP Fred Davies, and MPP Jeff Birch, Thorold Fire and Emergency Services, community groups, businesses, and many more. Thank you, city staff, volunteers, and our Special Events Committee. Your work in organizing this important community event is appreciated beyond words. Also, thank you to our amazing community sponsors. The pre-parade festivities in the Battle of Beaverdams Park were also a huge success. Pictures with Santa, face painting, hot chocolate, and much more. On December 1st, I was joined by Regional Counselor Whalen, BIA Chair Serge Carpieno, as we recognized Rock and Roll Hair Studio with a five-year anniversary certificate, even though it was actually their eighth anniversary, but due to COVID, things got delayed. Thank you, Barbie, for your longstanding and valued part of our downtown, located at 46 Front Street South. As well, on December 1st, Regional Counselor Whalen, BIA Chair Serge Carpieno, and I recognize and presented certificates to another new business in our downtown, Whisk Matcha Cafe by Evo &amp; Company, located at 51 Front Street South. Thank you to owners Craig Dykstra, Nisa &amp; Von Fernandez for choosing Downtown Thorold for your new location and much success moving forward. They are open seven days a week, 9:00 to 4:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On December 3rd, Counselor Dedavidas represented city council at the Early Childhood Community Development Centre 2025 Niagara Early Learning and Childcare Appreciation and Recognition Gala, held at the Americana Conference Centre in Niagara Falls. Of note, the ECC DC's headquarters are located here on Schmon Parkway in the city of Thorold. On December 6th, Thorold South Volunteer Firefighters Association Station 2 hosted a pancake breakfast from 8:00 AM to noon. I was joined by Counselors Decker and Sette at this event. On December 6th, the Friends of Beaverdams Church held their annual Christmas event, which included a food drive, wreath hanging, carol singing, and Christmas gift sale. Always a great event to get in the Christmas spirit. Counselors Sette, O'Hare, and DeAngelo were also in attendance. Upcoming events. December 12th, the annual Great Holiday Food Drive. This is the community care St. Catherine Thorold's largest food drive event of the year, and the need is greater than ever in 2025. The Holiday Express Bus will be in front of Foodland in the Pine Plaza from 2:00 to 2:30 this Friday, December 12th. Your continued support for this important initiative would be greatly appreciated. This Saturday, December 13th, the Thorold Lines Club is hosting Breakfast with Santa free of charge at the St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, 24 Claremont Street, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. On December 13th, Port Robinson Community Center's Breakfast with Santa with 9:00 and 11:00 AM bookings is now fully booked, but check their Facebook page for updates on possible openings and other upcoming events. On December 20th, the Downtown Thorold BIA is hosting Breakfast with Santa at the Thorold Legion Branch 17. You must preregister for this event, which begins at 9:00, and I was notified that this is fully booked as well. On December 20th, the Thorold Public Library is hosting a Holiday Storytime Event at 12:30 PM. No reservation required. Cookies and hot chocolate will be provided. And of special interest, I will be joining Santa Claus for the Holiday Storytime readings. The city of Thorold and various community partners will be offering 12 free holiday skates between December 19th and January 4th at the Frank Doherty Arena. Please visit the city of Thorold website for more information on times and availability. When possible, let's support our local businesses over this holiday season. They are the backbone of our community and give back in so many ways, so let's return the favor by showing them our support. With temperatures falling below freezing, the Thorold Community Arena located at 70 Front Street North and the Thorold Public Library located at 14 Norman Street North will be available for individuals seeking relief from the cold weather during operational hours to stay safe and warm. Any individual who is outside in the extreme cold can also call 211 to connect with the Niagara Assertive Street Outreach Team, and they are available to assist 24/7. The city of Thorold's municipal offices will be closed from December 24th through January 1st, 2026, for the holidays. Regular hours will resume on Friday, January 2nd, 2026, at 8:30 AM. In closing, as this is our last council meeting for 2025, on behalf of city council and staff, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, season's greetings, and a happy, healthy New Year. The holidays provide a special opportunity to gather with family, friends, and loved ones, to reflect on treasured memories, create new ones, and embrace the hope and promise that the New Year's brings. Okay, yeah. And that's the end of my mayor's remark, and I've been reminded that I missed declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest before we move forward? And I don't see any. Okay. Delegations. There are no presentations, delegations. Before we get into tonight's delegations, this is a long agenda tonight, and the clerk will be keeping track of speaking time for all presentations, delegations, and questions from members of council. Delegates will have up to 10 minutes to speak in accordance with the procedural bylaw. The clerk will advise me when there is one minute left, and I will let the delegates know. Council members for any given item, also in accordance with procedural bylaw, you'll have a maximum of five minutes for questions, and you'll only be offered an opportunity to speak a second time once. Every member has had an opportunity to speak. So, up first, we have the... So, we're starting here, right?
Yeah, report PWCS 71.
Where's all the delegation? Okay. Okay. So, Public Information Centre update, respecting 8 Carlton Street parking lot, the report is PWCS 71 2025, and I'll call on Leah Bradshaw, resident for their delegation. Is Leah present in the chambers?
Thank you, councilors, for this opportunity to speak to you about this issue of the parking lot expansion. Like many residents of the old heritage section of Thorold, I am disturbed at the prospect of carving into the green space adjacent to Memorial Park to build a new parking lot. I live at the corner of Chapel Street South and Portland Streets facing on the canal. I regularly walk down to this park in all seasons. It is a particularly beautiful old park with sloping shoulders, magnificent old trees, and a symmetry of walkway leading up to the cenotaph in the middle. And I would say that there is an almost sacred character to this park. I often sit on the benches around the cenotaph and read through the names of all the young Thorold men who died in the great wars of the 20th century. The park is peaceful, surrounded by heritage homes. Many of them, like ours, were lucky to own it, adorned with plaques giving brief summaries of the histories of these historic properties. In the summer, we see a lot of people walking the streets of Old Thorold, looking for these commemorative plaques, and ending up at Lock 7, diagonally across from our house, to watch the ships pass through the canal. I think we have a real gem in this town. Front Street in the last few years has morphed into a destination with the legacy of Henderson's Pharmacy, Shannon Passaro's great contribution to the community, Fig Street, the stationery shop, the wonderful patisserie, the Creekview Florist, and the Front Street Variety Store with their magnificent flowers and plants. Part of the appeal of this street, of course, is the relatively untouched architecture of century-old buildings. But this leads me into some broader claims that I hope may persuade you that this parking lot expansion is ill-advised. I taught political science at Brock University for 37 years, and among my regular courses was one on citizenship with a segment specifically on urban development and public space. In that course, I drew upon the work of Jane Jacobs. Some of you may be familiar with her, a famous urban theorist who lived in Toronto but whose work was cited internationally. Briefly, Jacobs advocated for three things that she deemed critical for thriving towns and thriving cities. One is what she called "eyes on the street," which means people walking. If you want to create a vibrant community, you need to encourage walking, and you need to discourage cars. Secondly, you need a combination in the core of the community of housing, shopping, and green space, all of those things coincidental to each other. And thirdly, you need to encourage density rather than efficiency. From everything I know about urban design, this proposed parking expansion is just wrong. It is short-sighted, and it will corrode the enviable character of Thorold. I understand there is a successful senior centre in the downtown core. It's actually a great thing for Thorold. I'm a senior citizen myself. But I also understand that senior citizens have issue with mobility. But I do not believe that the remedy here is a new parking lot. I think some of my colleagues will speak to the more particular issues about the parking lot itself. Surely, there are other avenues worth exploring for gaining access for seniors to the centre. When I think of Thorold, I think of Niagara on the Lake. The allure of Niagara on the Lake is partly the theatre scene, but it's also the heritage quality of that town. The demographic of Niagara on the Lake, both the inhabitants and the visitors, is heavily skewed towards senior citizens, but it is a heavily walkable town, if anyone has visited there recently, and there isn't a single parking lot in the downtown area. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you will rethink these plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leah, for your presentation. Are there any questions from council? Okay. We're going to move on next to 10-12, and that's Brenda Bader, president of Thorold Senior Centre 50+ for the delegation for the senior centre. Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give you some stats at the senior centre. I understand what everybody's speaking about. I think I've said that before, but we're in a real crunch here. We started taking numbers for everyone that comes into the senior centre. When they come in, they no longer sign at the front door. They sign in every activity that they have. So, they could be in the billiard room at 9:00. By 10:00, they're in exercise. By 11:00, they're in tai chi. So, every time they move from one place to the other, we have to take a number. We have to figure out how many we have in each activity so that we don't go over our numbers. And we're trying not to go over the numbers, but we, as of today, surpassed 300 people in the senior centre. So, the senior people that are coming in here, yes, I hope they can walk. Most of them that walk, that live in the area, will walk, but there are a lot of people that can't walk, or that need a wheelchair, or they need a scooter, or they need a walker. So, I just wanted to give you a few stats. Last month, for November, we took in 2,443 people that came in and out of our building for November. In the morning, we have, on Mondays, there's 138 people that will use that centre. We have 44 people just for our exercise class from 10:00 to 11:00. From 9:00 to 10:00, we have 20 people in exercise class. We have 10 people that are be downstairs in the billiard room, and by 11:00 o'clock, the zumbas will come in and start zumbing with 15 people. Slows down around lunchtime, except if we're having lunch, which we do on Mondays and Tuesdays, we bring in more people. So, in the course of a week, we're looking at 100 people a day that are coming into that facility. So, there's no place for them to park. There's no place for them to go, which means for us that we have to start backing up what we've been doing for these last past years to get these people out of their houses and away from social isolation and food insecurities. We can't do that unless they have a place to come and park. There's no place on the street even for them to park. So, the parking for us is just a necessity. We can't do without a parking lot, and I would hope that we can come to some kind of understanding of what we need, what the residents would like to see, and hopefully we can work something out together.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Any questions for Brenda? Go ahead, Counselor Dedavidas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brenda, you're seeing some of the people that come there, they have disabilities. Do they take Niagara Transit there, like for that $5?
Yes. Quite a few. Quite a few have... We have Niagara, the paratransit that comes in on a regular basis.
Yeah, so they don't need parking for that? They just get dropped off?
No. That's correct. They drop them off, pick them up. We have other family members that drop them off and pick them up. And we ourselves, as volunteers, go and get them, pick them up, bring them in, bring them home.
And maybe some of them carpool, like a couple seniors?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you do have carpooling. That's all happening right now. It's not like that's not happening.
Okay, and you still need the additional spots?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Just a quick question to Brenda. Has there been any count or calculation done on vehicles that park there that are not part of the senior centre?
Yes. Yes. A lot of people that work downtown park there. We have the church. We have the overflow from the funeral home when it is necessary. The church is right beside us. So, we have everybody in our parking lot besides just the seniors, not to mention the planning department. So, the planning department has, well, would need at least 25 or 30 on their own parking spots. So, we would get what was left over.
Just for that, but has there been any calculations to determine how many of those vehicles are non-senior vehicles?
Oh, you probably get eight to 10 a day that aren't, that don't belong to the seniors centre at all.
Or the seniors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, and thank you, Brenda. Thank you for your presentation. And I'm going to call on next Evan Anhorn, resident for their delegation. Welcome, Evan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, I would like to address you tonight on this planned expansion and what I see, and share what I see as some of the impacts that this project will have on our community and our green spaces. We, my wife and I, and our two small children, moved to Thorold in the fall of 2023. Before coming here, we had lived in many towns in southern Ontario, from Stony Creek to St. Catherine's, but it is here in Thorold where we decided to settle and own our first What drew us to Thorold were many things that we did not find anywhere else, from the deep reverence for history that resonates from its many heritage homes and buildings to the quiet beauty of its green spaces. In fact, it is right here, there in Memorial Park, adjacent to this planned expansion, where my wife and I sat at a bench, having finished the viewing of our, what would become our future home, where we made a firm decision that Thorold is where we wanted to live. After having resided here for several years now, we can see that there is another powerful and essential quality of Thorold, one that defines its character and its value, and that is community. A strong and vibrant community is the heart of what we believe, the heart of what makes Thorold such a wonderful place, for us, especially for raising a young family. It is a place where neighbors and community members support one another, where we can raise our children in a safe and positive environment buoyed by a strong sense of communal responsibility and connection. Indeed, the importance of community is the reason why we are here tonight, the grounds of this very discussion about the proposed expansion of the parking lot at 8 Carlton Street South. I have no doubt whatsoever about the importance of the senior centre for this town and the neighbourhood. That's not on discussion. My family has visited the centre many times for open houses and annual events, and we have found joy in meeting our community members there. We walk till we didn't park. We live right nearby. And yet, we fear that a vital locus of community in this neighbourhood is also under threat, and that is the many, and that is the green spaces. The many benefits of green spaces, like the one that will be directly impacted by this proposal, on the wellbeing of individuals and communities is so well-understood and established today that is not seriously under question. There is no need for us to travel far for this fact. Brock University, right here, has published findings in 2020 and 2022 on the vital importance of green spaces for mental health, socialisation, and empowering adolescents with a strong sense of environmental stewardship. Indeed, the green spaces in and around Memorial Park is where my family and I have felt the strongest and most enduring sense of community in Thorold. Throughout the warmer months, the wide and shaded lawns draw neighbours near and distant, whether they are out for a stroll with their furry four-legged family members, or they are simply spending some time reconnecting with nature. In the fall, we have been grateful witnesses to the sombre rites that honour our veterans. In the winter months, the young people come to these spaces for fun in the snow, often leaving behind a snow fort or snowman, who will be visited many times before he eventually melts away. In this way, the leafy lot at 8 Carlton Street South is a part of the natural setting that serves as a meaningful meeting place and anchor in our community, a shared space that reinforces a sense of community identity and allows us to connect with one another over the appreciation of nature. The role that this space plays in enhancing community cohesion has been synonymous with Thorold for us. Thorold is growing now, as our bustling primary school classrooms can attest. We should not be afraid of this. We should be eager to share everything that is wonderful about this town with the new families that are drawn, like we were, to settle here, eager to give them equitable access to these spaces, including the green spaces where community building flourishes organically. We know all too well that these municipal green spaces are shrinking virtually everywhere around the world, but no less in southern Ontario. Once paved away, they do not return. Community centres are unquestionable part of the important part of the puzzle of a thriving and cohesive community, and the considerable resources devoted to this project punctuate that fact. But what is unclear is whether there is a true and demonstrable need for paving this greenway. Thorold is growing now, and now more than ever, we must plan wisely to support who we are as a town and as a community of neighbours. And I wish to ask just for more time for us to consider and discuss this project. I think there needs to be more time to get accurate studies on the usage of the parking lot so that we can come to the right decision here. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Is there any questions for Evan? Go ahead, Counselor Dedavidas.
Good job, Evan. Do you feel with the parking lot being built there is going to kill the feel and the atmosphere of that park?
The feel is, I understand that that part of the land is not technically part of Memorial Park.
No, the feel, the feel and the atmosphere, having a parking lot, you think it's going to kill it?
I think it will have an impact. You can't explain that to a child that, you know, they can't go here now. Explain that to the dog you're throwing the frisbee to. The whole area is part of the vibrancy of that neighbourhood and is a draw outside of, beyond the neighbourhood, too. We have people, I continually meet people in that park every time I'm there. So, the parking lot would have presumably a fleet of cars parked there if we're to, if we believe those numbers, and it would be a place where the children aren't going to be running, the dogs aren't going to be fetching. It is, it will, it impacts the space, yes. I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, Evan. And before I go further, I just want people to understand the reason we close the doors in the back is because of the echoing and the sound, and it's not that we want to close the door on anyone, but it's just so that we can all hear and conduct a meeting in an atmosphere where everybody knows what's going on. And up next, I have Delegate Sean Wilson. Welcome, Sean, and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, for allowing me to speak tonight. I have information, I found information regarding a proposed parking extension at 8 Carlton Street. I was disheartened to hear that the contract had already been hired to work. I'll be honest, I believe the lack of transparency with the community about this was disappointing. The decision was made before anybody was consulted, and by that I mean the neighborhood and that would be losing the small piece of green space in a sea of asphalt. I think we can all agree that the park, including Memorial Park, was purposely left green space. This park has become a city gem, a place you can walk and enjoy the grass and the trees and the squirrels. I believe the council's main priority should always be consulting with those affected by the changes that are being discussed. This happens with Station 3 in Port Robinson. It should be done with this parking lot. The park belongs to all of us, and the input should be considered all the time. I'm hopeful that we can find alternatives to this, so we can all continue to enjoy this amazing spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Is there any question? Okay, seeing none. Thanks for coming to council, Sean. Up next, Joanne Aralata. And Joanne is here? Yep. Welcome, Joanne.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne Aralata, and I'm a resident in Thorold. And I want to address how the proposed additional parking spaces to the existing parking lot at 8 Carlton Street South could potentially be more of an expense beyond the $250,000 allotted in the budget for this project. Safe accessibility for the seniors entering the center is very important, but to expedite this proposed addition of 25 parking spaces could potentially bring about added expenses unless proper studies, research, community input is considered before giving a nod to this project. I want to begin by stating that I was surprised at this proposed extension of the lot at 8 Carlton Street since it is really never full. There is always plenty of parking available, as witnessed by myself and all the residents in the neighborhood that face the park every day. I would, I did attach a video. Are we able to show that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't receive any submission of a video. We typically have my department review it before putting the video up. The reason being, there could be personal information. For example, people may not want their face displayed publicly on a YouTube stream.
Okay. Well, the video shows, it was taken on Wednesday, November 26 at 1:15 p.m., when the center is open and functioning, and people are working upstairs in the planning department. And it shows 18 empty spots, two empty disabled parking spots, and this is only in the back, not on the entrance part, entering from Carlton Street. Again, could a proper parking study be done before we do anything else, so that we can determine how many spots are actually essential? I spoke to Mr. Dunsmore at the Information Center and Mr. Rashad about, is this part of the Thorold parking plan? And they both said no, that it was strictly for the parking of the seniors and the planning department. So, if that's the case, I'm not really sure if we need all those spots. Secondly, the location of the proposed lot will not resolve the accessibility issue for seniors entering the building or the property. The walk from the proposed parking lot, which is on the north side of the property, bordering onto Albert Street, is too far of a walk to the main entrance of the building, and the ramp is at the main entrance of the building. And it's not ideal for seniors to get to if they're going to be walking from their car that far. Will there be maybe another ramp put on the north side of the building, which is another expense to consider? So, maybe assessing the property and maybe where those 25 new spots will be, the north side of the property is potentially not an ideal spot to put it. Thirdly, I want to add that adding this parking lot approximately, if you're standing on Albert Street, the property is between 1 and 1/2 to 2 meters higher, and it's very close to Albert Street and could potentially cause excess runoff water entering into this narrow street and risking flooding. This will result into more money being spent in order to fix the sewer and existing plumbing infrastructure. And having the property assessed, looking at things like this, and the location, is it the ideal location for parking? Lastly, most concerningly, I have a question about the contractors. They were hired or paid a deposit before this proposed lot was even passed by council. According to the memorandum by Project Manager Abu Rashad, on November 18 regarding this proposed lot of 40 spaces, he states that nothing is to proceed with this project until the confirmation of council, which I understand hasn't happened yet. It mentions that following council's information and confirmation, staff will proceed with issuing the letter and executing the formal agreement. Three days following this memorandum issued on November 18, residents across the proposed construction of the lot received a letter from DBA Services, which is a noise and vibration consultant company, on November 21, they received it on November 21, to book an interior/exterior inspection by Wednesday, November 26. A few days after receiving this notice from DBA Consultants, the Public Information Center was announced to be held on the evening of November 24. It was at this meeting that I asked Sean Dunsmore what the residents should do with this letter from DBA Services, in which he told me to just ignore it and to not make any appointments with them. Why are these residents receiving a letter from this company when the proposed project hasn't even been passed by council yet? The memorandum with the budget information included 40 spaces, and it came under $250,000. But now, we're looking at 25 spaces, and is the city going to face a penalty with the construction company if we don't go ahead with the original plan? These are just questions I have. In conclusion, I ask that council doesn't push through this project, not to expedite this, without considering the following, one being a parking survey to accurately establish how many spaces are truly needed at this location. Two, assess the accessibility of the seniors entering and exiting the building in accordance to a safe and conducive parking location. More parking spots are not the answers for their safety, accessibility is. And three, properly assess the location of the extra parking spots in regards to potential flooding in the street, so that costly sewer expenses don't incur. As a result of a parking spotting and proper assessments of the location, parking, of the parking spots, this could save unforeseen costs. And most importantly, I agree with Brenda, provide a better solution for the community. Let's provide a better solution for the community and the seniors' center.
Is that it, Joanne?
That's it.
Thanks so much. Is there any questions for Joanne? Go ahead, Counselor Sen.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Through you. Thank you for coming tonight, Joanne. Nice to see you. Is it possible to get a couple of questions answered from staff on what she asked?
Well, those questions can be asked when
We'll do that later.
Okay.
Thank you, Joanne.
But you can save those questions for staff at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Up next, we all call on Tammy Friedman, resident as well, to present to council. And welcome, Tammy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tammy Friedman, and I am speaking on behalf of Friends of Memorial Park, a group of Thorold residents who found out recently, much too recently, about the city's plans to pave over green space for a parking lot. This plan came to our attention in early November, thanks to an article in Thorold Today. We swung into action, alerting as many people as we could through leafleting, social media, and word of mouth. We also tried to learn everything we could about how, why, and when the project came to be. By digging through old council and committee meeting minutes, sending inquiries to city staff, and relying on the investigative skills of local journalists at Smith and Doug Draper, we now know more about what took place. For example, city staff developed an initial plan for 15 parking spaces almost two years ago, if not earlier. City staff were consulting with the seniors' center about the project at least a year ago, if not earlier. $250,000, excuse me, was earmarked for the project in the 2025 capital budget approved nearly a year ago. At some point, we still don't know how, why, or when, the plan turned into a plan for 40 parking spaces. The city put out bids back in October, chose a contractor, and apparently awarded the contract on November 6, well before the council meeting on November 18, at which the project was expected to be approved. We discovered, to our astonishment and dismay, that almost no Thorold residents seemed to know anything about the project. The city's own environment, climate change, and biodiversity advisory committee didn't know. The Royal Canadian Legion Branch 17, which organizes commemorations at the war memorial, didn't know. Even city staff in charge of the project didn't seem to know about the zoning status of the affected land. The project has raised red flags for many reasons, including the loss of beautiful green space that Thorold residents of all ages use and love, the potential for environmental degradation, the proximity to parkland that has a provincial heritage designation, the impact on traffic patterns and road safety, the effects on property values, and more. And yet, it seems none of these considerations have been taken into account. At the November 18 meeting, in response to community demand, the city council agreed to hold a public information session and directed city staff to come up with an alternative to the 40-space proposal. Shortly thereafter, apparently, the staff learned that because of past zoning changes, the original proposal could not proceed. They designed an alternative plan with 25 parking spaces and less egregious destruction of green space and trees. But at the November 24 public information session, scheduled with what just two business days notice, both plans were presented for consideration. As of a few hours ago, may still be the case, both plans are still presented as options on the city's Let's Talk Thorold website. Not surprisingly, many residents who attended the public information session, believing they were expected to choose between two plans, said they preferred Plan B. Our group does not support Plan B. Why not? Because none of our questions and concerns about the project have been addressed. Where are the impact assessments? Where is the evidence that 8 Carlton Street South requires this amount of additional parking? What alternatives, not simply a smaller lot at the same location, have been explored? The report in the council's agenda for today's meeting simply states, quote, "There are no known environmental or climate change-related impacts to this report. Decisions pertaining to the parking lot extension plans may impact the environment. Options to include permeable pavement may have an impact on the project cost," unquote. There is nothing in this statement to alleviate our concerns. Underlying our concerns about environment, heritage, traffic, and other matters is a larger set of problems. This entire process has been dogged by a lack of transparency, a lack of public consultation, and failure to treat the city's green space as a public good that serves the community at large. And none of that has really changed. The secretive and misleading approach has serious consequences. The city made decisions without gathering basic, essential information that would have influenced and likely would have dramatically altered these plans. If the original project had gone forward, it would have placed us at risk for destroying green space unnecessarily and even illegally. The city is now on the hook contractually for a project that can't go forward in its original form. And the city has caused discord in our community by communicating with only a few select groups about its plans. When the city doesn't do its job, it falls to ordinary citizens to step up. That is who told the public about the project. That is who came forward with details about past zoning changes that staff apparently knew nothing about. As members of the public, we have a right to know what our elected representatives are doing with our tax dollars and to our public resources. But more than that, there are real advantages to gathering evidence, sharing information, and soliciting genuine input from the community. We all benefit when we are all included in decisions like this, because we have knowledge and skills and ideas that can help the city move forward without making terrible missteps and mistakes like those we have seen and continue to see in this case. Given all this, here is what we call on the council to do tonight. One, vote to cancel the project. Two, go back to the drawing board. First, take steps to address existing parking concerns at 8 Carlton Street South, such as reserving existing spaces, posting signs clearly indicating who can park where, imposing time limits, imposing fines, and towing as needed. Second, once this has been done, conduct a robust survey to gather data about the building users' actual parking needs. And three, once these efforts have been undertaken, call a public meeting to share and discuss the findings. Then, and only then, take a holistic approach to identifying and assessing options that are environmentally sound, culturally appropriate, and designed to serve the entire community's needs. It's not too late to protect our green space and restore our confidence and trust in you. Please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy. Is there any questions for Cam? Go ahead, Counselor DeDibis.
Tammy, you said you, no one notified you, you just found out in November, so you didn't find out any information in October? You didn't know anything about this project at all?
No. I found out on Friday, I believe it was November 14, when my neighbor stopped by my house and asked if I knew anything about it. I live at 1442 Albert Street East, directly across from where the emergency exit in the original plan would have been. But no, this was the first I had heard about it.
So, nothing in the mail, no phone call, no flyers, zero?
Nothing at all.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Tammy.
Thank you.
And members of council, just to be aware, there's three written delegations. Delegation Item 7, 8, and 9 are items of written correspondence respecting Public Information Center update, respecting 8 Carlton Parking Lot, submitted by Helen Hermenson, Gloria Leahy, and Patty Welsh. And council has those three written delegations. Okay. And I thank those individuals for their written delegations. In accordance with the procedural bylaw, report PWCS 71-2025, respecting Public Information Center update, respecting 8 Carlton Street Parking Lot, will be dealt with now. 12.13 PWCS 71-2025. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that report, please, to put it on the floor? Counselor Longo and Counselor DeAngelo, and staff's here to answer any questions. And now, open the floor for questions or comments. Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the public meeting due to a family issue. But at the last council meeting, I proposed a suggestion of using the Thorold, the museum area, the concreted area by the museum for additional parking spots. Was that explored? And why, if so, why wasn't it presented as an option?
I will ask Sean's here to answer that. I will ask Sean's here to answer that. I know there's an elevation change, but Sean, do you want to address that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly right. It was evaluated. It creates a big challenge in terms of trying to get cars in and out of there because of the elevation difference, so it wasn't presented as an option.
I think it should have been looked at a little bit more closely, because I think you could still add parking spots along that side of the building without infringing on the green space. I've read all the comments, for and against, and a lot of good comments were made tonight. And as a councillor, I do want to apologize to all the public, because there should have been a public process here. Way at the beginning, I know the seniors were involved from a larger, a longer standpoint, but the general public that lived in the area needed to have their say and their opportunity. I still think there's other options that haven't been fully explored, like A and B. Nobody seems really happy with, some will take B, but no one seems really happy with those two options for various reasons. And a lot of them have to deal with the green space, so I concur with them. This was a very contentious property that I think it was myself and councillor Hanley were the only two that are on this council, and I think our director of finance, going back to when this was almost deemed surplus and sold off to a developer to be developed, and said it was kept in city hands for a civic building, which ended up being the seniors center, which is great. So, there's a lot of history, heritage, there's a lot of individuals around the park that understand the green space and the importance. I think we need to go back a little bit and take a look at that to see if we could get some parking spots up against the building that don't infringe on the green space. And then, the other comments were that I think are very, very important, is looking at a permit system to park in that area. I think that's critical. More bylaw enforcement for vehicles that shouldn't be in that area that are causing concerns. It'd be nice to get a few cars off the roads, because I know Carlton Street is a very congested road at times when there's cars parked on the road, and it creates sightlines and hazards for anyone walking or anyone trying to exit a vehicle. So, I think a little bit more, I know this answer isn't, I know the seniors center really need these additional parking spots very quickly, but I think we need to step back a little bit at this point in time, come up with a better plan, I call it option C, and look more at that area there, because you already have concrete poured there, you're not affecting green space. Yes, you'll have to do some elevation work, but just looking there, I'm seeing 16 parking spots, eight on each side, that could be added in that area without affecting the green space. So, I think there's a lot of valid comments that are made through the public meeting, through the comments I've read. Even tonight, the presenters did a good job of presenting both sides, like even the seniors of the need, and then also what needs to be done. We're into the winter season here, I don't know if construction can start right away, but I think stepping back a little bit, looking at that area more specifically in my mind, to see if we can get some additional parking spots to solve this issue.
Thank you. Councillor Decker.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening. Joanne had brought up a point about the elevation where the new parking spaces were going to go. Sean, have we looked at the water runoff and how it would affect the homes that are actually on Albert Street?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we have.
And everything is good in that respect?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that will, it will be taken care of as part of the project.
So, right now, and I probably should know this answer, but I don't, how many parking spots do we have right now at the seniors?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, about 59.
59, and a comment was made that 30 of those spaces are for staff?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, something in that realm, 25 to 30.
Before this project, because there was really some great information tonight that's, you know, got me perhaps thinking maybe we should do a little more research into this project. Have we looked at putting, you know, time limits on the spaces that are there now and, you know, putting, you know, where the staff parking is, and maybe parking that's safe for seniors center only, and, you know, having bylaw do, I know it's hard, but having them do more rounds to get people towed that aren't supposed to park in that area? Have we looked at those options as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe there was a motion put forward by councillor O'Hare last meeting to have that exact conversation, but no, that has not been done yet.
Thank you, Sean.
Councillor DeDevita, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, I was at St. John's Church on Claremont there. Can we park the cars right on the street? If you go up to McDonald's or Park on Sullivan Street, if we did Claremont and parked some cars, like eight or nine cars on the street there, make it parking, and give it just to city staff, designate for city staff, and plus we come up with some other ways, we can solve this parking lot trouble without spending any money at all. Have you looked at that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, I have not.
Okay, I think that's something we really seriously have to look at. I was standing in front of St. John's Church, trying to figure this thing out today, and I thought, all these cars are parked there, why don't we just paint lines here? We do it on Sullivan Street in front of McDonald's, there's 10 parking spots. Why don't we do it in front of St. John's Church, have it just for staff, we don't have to spend hundreds or thousands of dollars, and we'll make everybody happy. I think we should look at that.
Anyone else have questions? Go ahead, councillor sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Well, the drainage portion was taken care of for me, so that, because I know some of the citizens still have drainage problems or flooding problems in their houses back there, so we certainly would want to add more on to them. So, I'll give my thoughts on this, it's just, they do need something here. I said this last time, I asked Gloria if, you know, if it was just the size that mattered or not. I agree that we should have put the, we put the cart before the horse, we should have had more public input. Maybe there are other things that can be done here, but at the end of the day, there may be some green space that gets taken up for this, with trees, trees blocking the way, no entrance on Albert Street, something like that. That may happen down the road, but if you're more comfortable, because the seniors need, they need this space, I believe they need the space. I've watched seniors walk up with walkers from up the street when they have events, because there's no parking in there. That, to me, just can't happen. But, on a day-to-day basis, I'm not there. So, my feelings are, if council wants to go back and look at other options, I don't know what construction can be done right now, I'm fine with that, but they need something there at the end of the day. And I just want to be honest with you as to what might come, but if it can be done better or less, then I'm open to that. But the seniors need this space, so those are my comments.
So, there's more people that want to speak, but there are three alternatives, so you can look at them. One's to proceed with option B, the others could direct staff to delay the project and explore other alternatives, or create alternative designs, so that's one of the options. I got councillor Hanley there who wants to speak. Go ahead, councillor Hanley. Councillor Hanley, we can't hear you. Can't hear you. I could hear you before, during, before the meeting, but I can't hear you now. Councillor, councillor, you're not muted on Zoom, check your computer volume. I'll come back to you. Do we have anyone else? Go ahead, councillor O'Hare, and then councillor Longo. I'll go back to councillor Hanley, hopefully we can get his sound.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Sean. Sean, just to be clear, the parking lot option B, that is really focused on parking that's going to be required for the planning and building department, is that not what that area is for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it won't be reserved for them, but yes, generally, it'll accommodate them.
Yeah, I understand we have 20 employees already in that department?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know for sure.
Okay, all right. Onto another thing, councillor sentence spoke a little bit about the landscaping, and I just want to confirm that in option B, that the four mature trees at the north end of the existing parking lot are going to be retained and will work around them, should that option go forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that's the plan.
Oh, great. And also to confirm what councillor sentence was touching on, I believe the drawing showed an additional eight to 10 trees being added on top of what wasn't there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. And the landscaping, again, that councillor sentence mentioned, that wasn't in the original plans, but that's something that can be looked at, so that it's providing green space shielding to the cars that are parked in the option B lot?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe it was in the original plan.
Oh, it was?
It's just been modified a little bit to accommodate the new plan.
Okay, and we're talking a serious landscaping where views directly onto the parking lot will be restricted and more green space would be viewed, is that what we're looking at?
Certainly, the restriction from Albert Street will be there. At this point in time, we don't have any landscaping for the view from Memorial Park, but we could certainly add that as we need to.
Okay, good, good. And my final point is, with the reduction, should we move forward with parking lot B, with the reduction in size, I would imagine there's going to be a little cost savings there. I would like to recommend that we use some of that money that was set aside for the original development to install permeable paving. We've not done that yet in the city, and it would be a prime example of where we could have this installed and see how it ages and how it performs. But we keep talking about it, but we never move forward. I know it's an added cost, but with the savings, perhaps this is something we could do. So, I'd like to recommend that.
Thank you. Councillor Longo, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the appropriate staff member. I'm going to pick up where councillor O'Hare left off with a few things. The report, I'm sorry I can't open it, I'm having technical difficulties, but it says there's no environmental impact. And I went there last meeting, and I'm just going to make a comment on this. Well, first of all, I'll ask why there is no environmental impact as far as staff is concerned.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we're removing some grass and putting the asphalt in its place. It's minimal environmental impact.
Okay, well, there's, I'll make a comment now, Mr. Mayor, there is an environmental impact. We have an environmental committee, this is insulting to the members of the environmental committee, they're not even made aware of projects like this, and then to say there's no environmental impact. Now, I know there's people on this council and in this town who really don't care about the environment, but there are people who do care. And I think we make this part of all reports, but yet we do nothing about it. And as councillor O'Hare said, you know, we don't even look at alternatives here to maybe make it less environmental impact on the proposed project. So, I'll leave that there. I'm going to touch on another thing the councillor mentioned, the cost of the new Plan B. I don't see a cost here. Are we to assume that this is going to cost the same amount as the original Plan A?
Do we have an answer for that? Because that's a question I was going to ask.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the costs weren't included in the report, because the project fell under our procurement policy where we didn't require council's approval for it. And so, yeah, the costs are going to be less than they were originally, and they will continue to be less.
Okay, but I'll just make another comment. Mr. Mayor, job, we're city stewards here, we're in charge of purse, and I'm being asked to approve a project, which I will not approve tonight, the way it is, with no knowledge of what I'm going to pay a contractor. So, I'm a little disappointed in that. A few things were said, through you, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know how accurate they are, but did city staff award this contract prior to our last meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we did.
So, you awarded the contract without council approval?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we have council approval via the procurement policy.
I guess, could I have the CAO respond to that, to explain that to myself, and maybe any other councillor, who cares?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think there are new procurement policy, if the amount is within the council-approved budget, that doesn't come to council for further approval. Having that, we have our procurement manager here, Robert Enziata, he can explain that.
Robert, can you expand on that, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, they said the new procurement bylaw, any project under $250,000 does not require council approval, as long as it falls within city budget. This project, I believe, came in at $193,000, did not require council approval. Regarding the other thing about additional cost to a new project, this contract was suspended, and we don't have any drawings or any plans on a new project, so we can't provide any pricing on that new project, based on those.
I do appreciate that answer, thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I do have one more, it just slipped my mind.
I can come back to you.
No, I do remember the question, Mr. Mayor, through you, and I'll ask the CAO, maybe he has a better understanding, since it's a staffing issue. But the comment was made that there's roughly 60 parking spots now, and 25 to 30 are taken up by staff members?
I think that's the magnitude of employees that are there. At currently, we have not only the planning department, we also have the building department there as well.
So, I just want to get this straight, we have 25 to 30 city staff members who park there, and they're there all day? The cars, are these people who travel about for their daily routine?
So, the planning department individuals, they park in the morning, and then they leave at the end of the day. However, our building department individuals, the building inspectors, plans examiners, they go to building sites for inspections, and then they come and go come and, just go in as required, on-site inspections.
Okay, I'll just make a final comment, Mr. Mayor. As I said, I won't support it the way it is. Again, I think we need to do more research on whether there's a need here. I also think we need to look at, and I don't want to sound like the bad guy, but I will, but in my years of working for somebody, I was never provided a parking spot that caused a problem. There are other parking lots downtown and other places to park, and that could free up 20 parking spots for free, not for $230,000. So, I think we have to look, take a wholesome look at this and figure out a better way to solve a perceived, or not, a potential parking issue.
Okay, and that's one of the options anyways. Councillor, first, let me see if councillor Hanley, we can hear him now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, councillor Hanley.
I wanted to defer the motion on the floor tonight for the next council meeting in January.
That's not?
For further input.
So, do we have a seconder for that? Because that's not, I've got councillor DeRose, the second, that he wants to refer this back for more information for the January meeting, am I correct, councillor Hanley?
That's right, for the January meeting, so we can take into consideration comments by the public and by my fellow councillors.
Okay.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's not, that's a referral, so it's not open for debate.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking for clarity. Does the motion want options coming back, or just getting all the information that was spoken to tonight and put in a report? I'm getting a little...
No, it's a good question. Councillor Hanley, you referring this back for more information and another, look at another lens of this?
Yes.
As long as it comes back with other options, I think it's good.
Yes. I want alternative, I want alternative options as well. Yes. I want alternative, I want alternative options, as mentioned by councillor Deditas, Claremont Street, take it into consideration, as mentioned by councillor Longo, parking alternately, maybe in a different location, i.e. downtown, and even considering, councillor DeAngela said with, beside the building where the sloping in the land is, let's take a serious look at it, it's only one more meeting.
Okay, councillor, can I just say one thing before I do the referral? Number two says councillor direct staff to delay the project to explore alternatives or create alternative designs. Would you be just good with us voting on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take that referral off the floor, and we'll put number two on the floor, and you're going to move that, and do I have a second or for that? Councillor Deditas. So number two's on the floor. Okay, councillor Hanley, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
We're going to put that up, and then, yeah, that's now on the floor, so it's open for debate. Okay. Go ahead to first, because councillor De Rose wanted to speak, and then I'll go to councillors.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thanks to all the presenters, some great points back and forth were presented. My original thought was to concur with councillor DeAngela about an option three, or now it's option two. Just to step back, and I like what Tammy said and what many of the presenters said, but just about, take a step back, let's do this right, do it once and do it right. Our seniors, our neighbours, they're all valuable members of our community, we don't want to diminish the respect we have for you, but we're in a tough position, we're trying to make the best choice for not only you, but also all the taxpayers. So I support something along the lines of think what you're going to put up.
Yeah, and, well, and the thing here is that we got some time, because we're in the dead of winter, okay? So there isn't going to be much construction going on, but at the same token, we want to get to an end.
Right.
You know?
But from now, from now till then, I don't think there's...
Okay, so let's have councillor sentence next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question for staff and then a recommendation to the, to the motion.
The motion's going to be on the floor.
Okay. I would like to see, I don't know if that's assumed in here, but I think part of the anger was how rushed the PIC was last time. I'd like to see a proper PIC or even two, but another one that has some time limit to it for them to think, and then come to a meeting. So I don't know if that's an amendment to that, I don't know if...
No, because if they're, if they're coming with alternative designs and that, we're going to have a...
Another PIC.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My question I have is, just for staff, can I ask them a question? One more question?
Yes.
The building beside the existing building, I know, I think I was talking with Jeff before, it has a, the museum building, it has a timeframe on it for release. The hope is to have the, a museum built, they won't need that anymore. Can we also have that in our back pocket down the road when that happens, to clear that building that has kind of been a pain over the years, just the building itself, not people in it, and having that cleared? I had to clarify that. And having that cleared out, and then using that space, it isn't green space, for anything else we might need down the road.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the question was, can we turn down that building and put a parking lot on?
I went a long way around, but yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it is council's building, they can do as they wish.
That would be the will of the next council.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but keep it in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor DeAngelo and councillor O'Hare.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'll support this moving forward. I think the delay in time should also give us an opportunity to look at a permit system, and also to look at bylaw enforcement for vehicles that are parked there, and then also to explore all options regarding potential city vehicles moving to a different location. I know some have been suggested, but even, you know, you could get potentially lease some spots from the funeral home, which is around the corner. So I think, and I'm just throwing that out there, I'll leave that up to staff to come back with, hopefully, a whole pile of options for moving some vehicles out of there to create some extra space here. But I think bylaw enforcement for vehicles that are not related to the senior centre or to the city should be looked at so that they're not consuming parking spaces.
And then there's also, so people understand, there's also another report that's going to be coming back, because we've had a lot of complaints. So even the people that are here tonight, we've had a lot of complaints from Carlton Street and Claremont Street for people, for parking on those streets, and emergency vehicles and other vehicles not having proper access. So just so you know, it's a, we've, we've got a report coming back on that as well. So go ahead now, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to start by saying, the growth at the senior centre has been phenomenal. A couple of years ago, there were 75 members, now there's 300, and it's continuing, it doesn't stop. So we will have an issue to face, whether it's today, or next year, or the following year. So congratulations on the great growth. My question is, can we get bylaw involved right away so that we can work out a parking permit system? I dropped off at the 50-plus centre samples of parking permits that the Thorold Community Credit Union uses, but can we speed that up a little bit and ask bylaw?
Here, so he can work in conjunction with the, with planning and public works.
Okay, so can we make that official, that something is arranged so that they can meet?
That can be all part of the report, okay?
Could that not start already? I mean, this is something we could do right now.
Well, I think it can be, but then we have to look at it holistically when we know what we're doing, too. You know, when we finally know what we're doing, then we can look at what's going to be the impact, and where's bylaw going to be involved, and what are they going to do. But yes, they can be involved all through the process.
Okay, I think sooner would be better than later. I mean, this is an issue that the centre's facing, so if we can meet that head-on and try to find a solution, all the better. So I hope that something can be arranged sooner. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, councillor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you said wait with the bylaw for the report, because let's, there's a lot of people that do business that come and go through there. So we can't have people being ticketed to go do some business at the Carlton, so we always have to keep that in mind. That's why we have to wait for the report to come back, so we don't disrupt business. And I'm really happy with our decision tonight, because this is going to impact a lot of people, and we have to get this right. Take our time, don't rush it. This way, we can find a solution that makes everybody happy.
Thank you. Okay, and councillor DeAngelo, go ahead.
Yeah, just, again, I brought up that, and again, I agree with councillor O'Hare, that I think we should start that permitting system, not enforcing it, but let's get the discussion of how it's going to look like. So a month from now, when we come here, we're not starting a month from now, looking what the system's going to look like, because there's going to be different individuals involved, different organisations. So to me, starting it now makes more sense than waiting a month from now and starting it at that point. We're going to have it no matter what. So let's start developing that plan now, so that when we're rolling this all out, it's ready.
Yeah, so they can work together collectively.
So I'd like to see this as item number two on the part of this motion, so it's in there and it's recognised as an important part of that report that's coming back.
So what do you want?
Just...
It's, other than what we have up there?
Well, let me see what's up there, and then I'll... And, Mr. Mayor, could you be as simple as direct staff to, to begin the process of developing a permitting system for the parking lot, consulting with the stakeholders? As simple as that gets it rolling.
Well, it's ready to explore the parking permit system. Okay, that's, and first of all, I have to go, councillor Hanley, are you okay with that? That's a friendly amendment?
Can you hear me on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, you can hear me now? Oh, I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. I can hear you loud and clear now.
I got it fixed, no problem, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure it's...
I'll try to keep it down.
...for the parking permit system with stakeholder involvement. I want, I want them involved at the beginning of the process, not the end of the process. Let's get it right this time, so I'd rather see that in, that noted in there. I mean, friendly amendment's up to council, right?
Yeah. Are you good with that, councillor Hanley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. Who seconded that?
Councillor De Rose?
Councillor Deditas.
No, was it, or De Rose?
Councillor Deditas.
And you're okay with it? I just want to make sure the mover and seconder...
Yeah, I'm good with it, I think we've...
Then we don't have to vote on it separate.
Yep.
Okay, so it's there now. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we had a mover and a seconder, we've had a wholesome discussion. All those in favour? Opposed, that is carried, unanimous.
So that...
Yes, it was. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to agenda item 14.3, motion, it's respecting the assessment processes and methodologies of the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, IMPACT. We have Kieran Daniels, a resident for, his delegation, and Kieran, I seen you here, you're there, yeah? And Kieran, you have up to 10 minutes for your delegation. Wants everybody, we won't start, we won't start the clock until you're, everybody's set.
Make sure this is on and I'm talking properly into it. So I brought some water, you know, I didn't realise there were so many delegates tonight. But, all right, so, good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff. You all know me, I'm Kieran Daniels, lifelong resident here in the city of Thorold, community advocate and vice chair for your committee of adjustments. Also served as the chair and an active member for the Parks, Trail and Recreation Advisory Committee. My family's lived in Thorold for over 50 years. My mother, she's recently recognised as citizen of the year, and is deeply involved in the community. I ran for council in 2022, plan to do it again, but not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about fairness and a call to regional action on an issue that affects every homeowner in our community, it's IMPACT's property assessment system. Residents, particularly long-term homeowners, are experiencing drastic property tax increases due to IMPACT's reassessment process. Assessments are based on a 2016 validation data and not today's market conditions. IMPACT estimates what property could have been sold for in 2016, even if the home hasn't been sold or renovated. So, for example, I completed a home addition, it was a kitchen, two bedrooms, in 2019. IMPACT, however, incorrectly recorded the construction as completed in 2022, overstated the square footage, and even included a thousand-square-foot finished basement. This air inflated my property assessment and triggered a retroactive bill of over $7,500. So, Thorold is one of the fastest-growing cities in Canada, you know, numerous of subdivisions, roads, sidewalks, parks, increased municipal costs. Yet, long-term residents in older neighbourhoods with fewer amenities are paying disproportionate higher taxes, even though we're not selling our homes. It's a key point, that market-based assessments are irrelevant for homeowners who plan to live in their homes. Improvements made to live better, not to sell, should not result in punitive taxes. And it's not a Thorold issue, it's a provincial issue. I get it. IMPACT reassessments raised my property taxes from approximately $2,900 to over $7,000 a year, almost matching my mortgage. This places a heavy financial burden on homeowners, particularly seniors, or those who are on fixed incomes. With the cost of living rising faster than wages, these increases are forcing many residents out of their homes. In 2024, the province collected $42.7 billion, that's just in Ontario, in property taxes from reassessments and new builds only. While the city of Thorold receives a part of this revenue, the provincial impact is substantial, affecting fairness and affordability across Ontario. This highlights IMPACT's processes are not just local issues, but systemic and a province-wide concern. So meanwhile, there's been no provincial reassessment update since 2016, which is almost 10 years now, creating massive inequalities. Two similar homes on the same street can have completely different tax burdens, sometimes thousands of dollars apart, simply because of timing or because of IMPACT's assumptions. In Thorold, residents are seeing some of the highest effective tax rates in the Niagara region. While living in older neighbourhoods, without the same infrastructure or amenities as new subdivisions, we are witnessing rapid growth, new subdivisions, new roads, new parks being built, yet many of the longstanding streets still don't have proper curbs, gutters, or modern infrastructure. Most of these new developments border large cities like St. Catherine's in Niagara Falls, where residents spend their money. Yet, it's the long-term Thorold residents footing the increasing tax bill. And often, the people living in these subdivisions aren't homeowners, they're renters. So it's our long-term residents, the people who've built this community, who are shouldering the financial strain. From my own experience, I can tell you that IMPACT assessments aren't always accurate or fair. My property's reassessment incorrectly recorded construction dates, square footage, a finished basement, even though all permits were properly filed and finalized with the city in 2019. IMPACT could have very easily verified these days with the city building department, but they didn't. Affairs like this are happening to residents who follow proper procedures. How many others are facing similar issues without realising it? So IMPACT is a non-for-profit corporation funded entirely by Ontario taxpayers, yet it operates like a corporation. High-paid executives in roles that don't improve property assessments, or accuracy, or fairness. And its mandate's clear, to deliver fair, transparent, and equitable assessments, not to burden residents with speculative market-based increase. Yet, the 2024 reassessments have resulted in a sharp tax increase for some residents, raising serious questions about their priorities and their accountability. So we need answers, obviously, but how many properties are reassessed each year? Are residents paying more because IMPACT has inflated property values, or is this because the city genuinely needs additional revenue for services? Taxpayers deserve clarity from IMPACT and is fully fulfilling its core mandate. Any executive positions or processes that don't directly improve assessments must be carefully scrutinised to ensure the system serves residents and not bureaucracy. So, I'm not here to blame the city, and I know the system is built largely by the province, but Thorold can be part of a solution. So what I'm asking council to do today is support a motion calling on the province of Ontario to review IMPACT's assessment model for fairness and transparency, collaborate with other Niagara municipalities, and bring forward a regional unified position. Request reporting from staff to determine how many properties are reassessed each year, and what financial impact this has locally. It's not about one person's bill, but it's about protecting affordability, fairness, and public trust for all residents of Thorold. So, when I dealt with, directly with IMPACT or my reassessment, I was shocked how difficult this is to navigate. Even with my professional background, 20 years of working in engineering consulting, my understanding of municipal processes, and my role as your vice chair for your committee of adjustments, this was a battle. I spent hours trying to understand how IMPACT calculated my property's value, only discovered they used incorrect information that could have easily been verified by city records. If someone likes me, like me, who works in this field, struggles this much, I can't imagine what it's like for a senior, or a first-time homeowner, or anyone without my knowledge. And that's why I'm here today. It's not just for me, but it's for every resident in Thorold who feels powerless against a system that just doesn't seem built for them. So Thorold has an opportunity here, you can lead by example, join forces with other municipalities, call for transparency and demand fairness in how IMPACT assesses and taxes our homes. And our community deserves better, and I believe you all agree with that. So, thank you, Mayor, city staff, members of council for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I truly hope that Thorold can stand with other municipalities to demand a fair and transparent property assessment system that reflects reality and not assumptions. In closing, I want to make it clear that this isn't just about my own experience, it's about fairness to every homeowner in Thorold and across Ontario. It's about fairness to every homeowner in Thorold and across Ontario. As vice chair of your committee of adjustments, I've seen firsthand residents try to improve their homes and contribute to their community, only to face steep, unexpected property tax increases and reassessments. It's not how you build trust between residents and your government. I understand that MPAC is a provincial body and council, you can't do anything directly. It's not in your control to control the assessments. I understand that. But you can do is what I'm asking today, is take leadership. You know, roll by supporting a motion to call on the province to review their system. Thorold can join other municipalities across the region and the province in pushing for transparency, fairness, and a better process for homeowners. I think we have an opportunity here that we can lead on the issue. Stand up for fairness, fiscal responsibility on behalf of our community. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Karen. And I'm going to open the floor up for questions. Go ahead, Counselor DeRoe.
Thank you, Karen, for coming tonight and kind of pouring your heart and soul into this. You've done a great job presenting. Just one question, because I know we talked about it, and then I gave you my example back. You must have heard many different stories, correct?
Right.
That's, I just want to ask you, how relevant is this topic, say, just in your social circle?
It's very relevant, and to the point where some people, like even my parents, were questioning it, like, why are my property taxes so high now? They didn't, they're not, there's no more people living, there's actually less people living in their house than there was 15 years ago, yet they're paying more taxes. They have the same amount of toilets, the same amount of kitchens, use the same amount of water, they pay for the same amount of services. I get it, property taxes go up. But it, it, it's a problem that we need to deal with, and I believe if, if this motion can go through and we can get other municipalities on board, we can actually push the province to reassess this, because it's not fair for them to do reassessments based on hypothetical like, like I said, they put a thousand-square-foot finished basement in my house. I don't even have one. They looked at the drawings, they would, they could clearly see. The house was built on helical steel piles, the rest of that was built in the 1800s, and it's all crawl space. Now, I'm stuck with a $7,500 bill right before Christmas, and like, why is that my fault? I went through all the proper, I did the drawings, I did the design, I did the contracting, I did everything myself. So, maybe they just picked the wrong person, but obviously, the next person that they pick, they're not going to have the same sort of knowledge as what I had when I was hit with this bill.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Senn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thanks, Karen, for coming. I've heard the horror stories too. For me, it's, it's, it's the amount of time between and it's the idea that, and I talked with the director of finance before, that, you know, about what we, we can do, but for them to come in and say, okay, here's your $7,500 bill, without looking, without knowing, and all those problems. Also to say, have some system in there where $7,500 at once is a big problem for people. Where maybe, okay, well, this is over four years that we're not assessed, so maybe you pay X amount, X amount, X amount. It's a real problem for people in affordability right now. So, I'll support this in a heartbeat, and I'm hoping we can get somewhere with it.
So, my, my issue with that is that I didn't get the bill from the city. I pay, I pay my taxes through my mortgage. I got the bill because Scotia Paying paid it on behalf of me. So, I said, can you please pause the payment while it's under dispute? She said, okay. I go back, I call, month later, I'm like, why is it more? She's like, oh, we charge interest on that based on your mortgage. So, if I don't pay that right away, I'm stuck flipping the bill for another 4.5% on eight, on 7,000, like, it's going to be $10,000 by the time you pay it off. And this is just based on their, you have the records. The drawings clearly show, like, the, it's obviously under dispute right now, but it's it, to me, it boggles my mind for them just to come up and say, you know, here, you have to pay this now, and nobody's batting an eye, and I have to sit there and take the grunt of the whole thing, so.
Go ahead, Counselor Decker, and then Counselor
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Karen, for coming and presenting that. I'm probably one of those people that don't really understand all the lingo with the MPAC, and I'll support your motion, because, yeah, I agree with you, like, people get assessed for things that they don't have, and it's ridiculous. So, I appreciate you coming to council and, and, you know, hopefully, maybe I'll understand it better if they can explain it better.
When I talked to the person on the phone, he just directed me to a website and said, here, browse your neighborhood, and that was it. So, I had to go through, and you only, MPAC only provides you with 100 clicks. So, if you clicked on 100 houses and didn't pick 24 or four of your favorites, well, guess what? You don't get any comparable properties. You're responsible for comparing the properties that match what your house is built. Now, the fact that they had my house built as brand-new construction in 2022, it, it triggered the whole thing. And it's against their own legislation that they can't go back further than two years. My permits were done and closed in 2019. They went back six years and then stuck me with a $7,500 retroactive bill and up my taxes $4,000 a year.
Counselor DeRoe.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming, Karen, and I agree, MPAC is they're, they're disorganized, and it's very, very expensive to do appeal process with them. We hired lawyers the whole night. Did you receive a property assessment notice from MPAC explaining the reason they increased assessed value of your property? Did they give you?
Yeah, because they, they said it was built in 2022.
That was the only reason?
They reassessed my property based on a new build in 2022.
I got another question for you. What specific parts of MPAC process felt the most unfair and confusing as a homeowner?
Going through the process of trying to identify which houses actually match are comparable to yours within your neighborhood. Now, their models are based on 2020, or 2016 market value, so they had my house as being the, if I was to sell my house in 2016, they said I was getting $382,000 for my house, which is, which if I could get that in 20, I would have sold my house in, in 2016. That just proves that, like, how outdated that the system is. If the province was to ever say, oh, well, we gotta jump to 2020 houses, well, you know what? Every single person in this room is probably losing their house. Any person that's on a fixed income, say, somebody retired, all of a sudden, they get hit with an extra $500 a month for property taxes, they're not going to be able to afford their house. They're going to, there are going to be seniors, a lot, people that are retired, you're, it's, it's every person in this room. It's not just me. But somebody actually has to stay something for it to actually happen.
Oh, I agree with you 100%. Some seniors with this tax increase lose, one-third of their income is gone to property tax. How can they survive? With your case, you went from $2,000 to $7,000, that all at once, one shot?
All at once.
Okay.
With a $7,500 retroactive bill that I was forced to pay out of pocket last month right before Christmas.
And they didn't phase it in?
No, they said I could, they said I could, they, I could leave it as a dispute, but my money would sit there and accumulate interest on, on my, as my mortgage every single month.
Yeah, it's criminal how they do this process, the whole thing needs an overhaul, and I would support you 100%.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
Oh, thanks, Karen, for coming and presenting tonight. Anyone that's dealt with MPACs, I'll
Right.
when you're doing that, and, yeah, the, and there's always an excuse when they're assessing homes that if you pick one that's very close to yours, they'll come up with excuses that it's not similar to yours, especially if the value is lower, they always look for higher ones. But, so, I'll, I'll support the motion. I can understand the frustration.
Right.
You, you seem very passionate about this issue. Have you looked at their MPAC site about getting on their board of directors?
Between, uh
No, no, sometime, again, sometimes when you're passionate about something, you can, you can affect change from within. Supporting this is from top down, but going from bottom up sometimes is very helpful, too. So, and I know they have municipal representatives, they have taxpayer representatives, and they had a third category, too. Just, again, because you're passionate with this, that's why I'm suggesting, if that's something, and there's provincial representatives, so if that's something that, and you could, you could bring your, your voice right to the table there at the board level. But, again, I know we're all busy, but I, just a thought because of your passion. Thank you.
It takes seven or $8,000 out of someone's pocket, they're going to be very passionate about something very quickly, so they're going to do their research.
Okay. Okay, so now I'm going to call on Counselor DeRoe for his motion respecting the assessment. Thank you, Karen.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your time.
For his motion respecting processes and methodologies of the municipal property assessment. And do you have a seconder for your motion, Counselor? Counselor DeRoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the municipal property assessment corporation MPAC is responsible for assessing all properties in Ontario and plays a key role in determining municipal property taxes, whereas MPAC assessments are based on estimated market value do not adequately reflect the lived realities of homeowners who are not selling or profiting from their property. Whereas municipalities across Ontario have experienced significant resident concern and financial strain due to rapid increases in assessed values, particularly in legacy neighborhoods with long-term residents. Whereas the province of Ontario reported a $42.7 billion increase in property tax revenue resulting from reassessments and new development growth. And whereas municipalities such as Thorold have limited control or recourse in addressing the inequalities created by the current MPAC system. Now, therefore be it resolved that the corporation of the city of Thorold in acts as follows. Number one, that Thorold City Council formally request that the province of Ontario conduct a comprehensive review of MPAC's residential property assessment model with an emphasis on ensuring fairness, transparency, and protection for long-term homeowners. Number two, that Thorold City Council formally request that MPAC provide detailed reporting on the number and type of reassessments conducted annually within the city of Thorold and an overview over their process of selecting properties for reassessment and methodology used in conducting reassessments. And number three, that city staff be directed to circulate this motion to all Niagara municipalities, the region of Niagara, and the Association of Municipalities, AMO, seeking their support and enforcement. Sorry. And the, and to MPAC, the office of MPP Jeff Birch, and the office of Premier Doug Ford. And can I just share, oh, sorry.
No.
Can I just share my experience recently?
Quickly, yeah.
Just quickly, take two seconds. Drunk driver hits our child at home my sister and I own on Pine Street, most of you know where it is. Insurance is told by the city they have to get a building permit to fix it. They fix it, my sister starts getting these ridiculous tax bills, and MPAC had put that she did major renovations and remodeled the house. So, this is, this is part of what Karen's talking about, and so I, I have, I have issues with them too as well, and it's it's, I think they have to communicate more with the, with cities and get on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor.
I just want to add to this, they complain about affordable housing and rents increases. As a landlord, you get hit, you pass it down. So, maybe we can put something in this, if you want affordable housing, you have to work with us. You raising property taxes is hurting us, so maybe we can incorporate that in there somehow.
Well, the problem is that, that the tax, it's the assessment that you want to uncorrect so that you're paying the correct taxes, so it folds into that, Counsel.
But the more tax I pay, the more rent they're going to pay.
Absolutely. Okay. So, we had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay. So, Counselor, we have consent items 11-1 to 11-7. Can I get a mover and a seconder, because we use the same mover and a seconder, Counselor Senn, Counselor O'Hare? Does anyone want to poll or speak on any of these? Go ahead, Counselor Longo, what one? Yeah?
I would like to poll 11-7.
Okay, that's one I was going to poll, so I'm happy you polled it. Anyone else? Okay, see, go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
That came out in consideration. The accounts payable, 11-5. I just wanted to declare a conflict. My brother works at JBM Office Systems, and there are several checks that have been written to him. So, that one I just want to note as a conflict. And I didn't have to pull any. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so do you just want to speak on it, Counselor, and then we'll take them all together? Do you want to change anything, or what's your?
Yeah, well, I'd like to speak on it, make a comment for sure.
Okay.
Ask a question.
Well, let's do 11-1 through 11-6 first. I had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, 11-7, we'll use the same mover and seconder, but you can go ahead, and I got a comment I want to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to staff on 11-7. It's a draft plan subdivision. I seem to recall this one came to us quite a while back, and there was discussion on this, I believe it's a condominium complex. Is that true?
Someone from planning here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that.
Okay, go ahead, Jay.
Yes, so, you are correct in identifying that this recently came to council. And so, really, this application was just brought forth to change the ownership model of the condominium. So, they had previously had a common element condominium, and I, I won't get into the nuances of the Planning Act, but in order to create kind of the, the ownership model that they want to, they need to go through this draft plan of subdivision, so there won't be kind of any physical changes to what was approved by council. This is really just an ownership model kind of application being made.
Okay, so I guess my question is, at the time, when it originally came, we talked about sidewalks in the neighborhood. Can you confirm that there will be sidewalks?
Jay?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I can let me, we can confirm that there will be part-lock control and further controls on this. Let me defer to Mark on that question.
Mark, go ahead.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. So, through the draft plan conditions and detailed engineering design, we can confirm we don't know exactly what the layout is going to look like, but typically, in a condominium or a subdivision, there would be sidewalks on one side of the road.
Okay, so typically, so there will be? Sorry to put you on the spot, but
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, it, it will come out through the detailed engineering design, but in our engineering, our typical engineering standards for a subdivision, it is looked at on one side of the road.
Okay, I'm sure you can appreciate my apprehension here. I kind of would like to know that there's going to be sidewalks, so is there anything we can do at this point to confirm that there will be sidewalks for sure?
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, it is included in the draft conditions that we would look at that, and it would meet the standards of the municipality.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Counselor? The only question I had regarding the same report is that I want to make sure the people that are going to purchase there, whatever, that they're adjacent to a heavy industrial property. Because I don't want them coming after and complaining that, you know, noise or whatever. I know that there'll be a berm in that, but is that going to be, are we going to make sure they know that? That's my question.
Through, Mr. Mayor, we could take that direction, and we can ensure that there are warning clauses that are registered on agreements of purchase and sale.
Yeah, because we've done that in other places where the sea and tracks are and different other things, but I think that would be prudent. That's all.
I think that's fair.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Hello? Go ahead, Counselor Hanley.
I, yeah, if I could just make a point there in regards, you made a good point there in regards to the railroad tracks. Somebody, remember, we've had an issue in Port Robinson East in regards to Thorold Road and Hamilton Street? Because when they built the subdivision, I believe they didn't put in the proper glazing in the windows that was agreed upon in the plan of subdivision, and that was one of the issues, where they had triple and that was one of the issues, where they had triple glazed glass on the sides of the buildings that would be facing the railroad line. So would that be something that would be put into consideration too, to alleviate any concerns down the road? Because we did have a significant issue with that some years ago here in Thorold with the development of Port Robinson East.
Yep, through you, Mr. Mayor, that would all be looked at through the noise attenuation study that was provided, and if it's necessary to make it conform with the provincial standards, then double glazing, triple glazing of windows would all be taken into consideration as a result of their technical studies that were done.
Okay, does that answer your question, Counsel?
Thank you.
Okay, okay, we had a mover and a second or, same mover and a second or, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Now we're gonna move on to items for consideration. The business improvement area requests to fill a secondary position, there was an appendix in the closed session. If council satisfied with the BIA's recommendation to appoint the applicant, there's no requirement to discuss this item in closed session. If you have questions relating to the contents in the confidential appendix, then this must be done in closed session. Is there anybody that wants to discuss this in closed session? I don't see that. Can I get a mover and a second or? Counsel Sentence and Counsel Decker. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 12-2, CLK 17-2025, election sign bylaw updates. Can I get a mover and a second or for this report? I got Counsel Decker and Counsel O'Hare. Nicholas and Justin can answer questions. That's the report. You see, there's some changes. Go ahead, Counsel DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, my, my concern with this is every election, we seem to have a problem enforcing it. Is there any considerate, because there's some amendments in here, one is to remove two signs down to one sign, and there's multiple properties that are gonna have two signs of an individual on it. Is, how is that gonna be enforced equally and equitably? Because last election, and plus there was a lot of signs on public property last election, and they were not removed. They were, they were there, so it gives some candidates unfair advantage if they break the rules, to those that follow the rules seem to get penalized on it. So my question is, how will that be enforced this upcoming election, especially reducing two to one? You're gonna have a lot of properties that are going to be in contravention of that particular item.
Go ahead, Nicholas.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it, it starts at public education and also making sure that candidates and registered third parties are ultimately aware of, of the requirements. It, it would be their signs and the, the deposit that every candidate and third party would have to pay, the penalty would come out of that. So I think it, it starts with public education and education of, of the candidates as well.
Okay, just follow up, after you've educated them and they still do it incorrectly, what happens?
So, under the bylaw, Clerk's Department is able to reach out as a courtesy and request that they remove the signs ASAP, and barring which, the signs can then be collected and penalized based on each sign that's picked up.
Okay, just for clarity, is it gonna be a proactive approach, or is it going to be by complaint basis only?
So we, we will work with bylaw staff who are touring the streets of the city, and they're in a position as well to spot potential contraventions of this bylaw.
Okay, I'm just hoping that that's followed through, because the past couple elections, that hasn't really been the case, but I think it's important to punish those that are not following the rules, especially after you've educated them, explained it to them, they signed off on it, and they still do that. So I know sometimes it's not the candidate themselves, but then they have to make sure they educate and make sure that their team that's helping them through the election also follows the rules of our community. Because one of the biggest things that we've done and improved our, look of our community is we removed excess signs that were on public property, and so our city doesn't look as junky when you drive down the street with, you know, get your windows here in Brampton and get your grass cutting from wherever, so it gave an unfair advantage to other businesses. So as long as that's followed through and it's done appropriately and according to this bylaw, I have no issues with that. I, I think it's just important that, that is, is followed up. Unfortunately, there's gonna be rule breakers, so they need to be punished. Thank you.
Counsel, second.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just have one question on the report. Maybe you can answer it, Nicholas, I'll preface it with, the 35 to 45 days, I thought we went down in time for the signs on the lawn. One of the worst parts about, for me, about campaigning is bothering people to have the sign on the lawn for that long, and you're piggybacking on the looks within the city. What's the rationale to go to 45 days from 35? I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd rather it stayed at 35.
No, I'm gonna let Nicholas speak to this, because I asked him that question, because we had a long debate and went to 35, and now we're going back to 45.
Okay, and no offense, Nicholas, I just...
Can I explain why?
Yeah, so as the report notes, one of the main reasons this is coming forward, I mean, it's always good to review bylaws, but it was a, a regional clerk and CAO-driven initiative to get a bit more consistency in terms of the, the election sign bylaws across the different municipalities. You know, it can especially be true, you know, with municipalities that you border, you literally cross the street and you're dealing with completely different bylaw entirely. So, you know, they're not gonna be identical across the board, but certainly more consistency is what we were seeking, and the 45 days is what was landed on. I will note that there was a, a very recent court decision that found that 30 days was unconstitutional, it breached Section 2B of the Charter, and it, it wasn't, it didn't pass the minimization test either. So I know 30 days is not 35, but to, to go to 45 airs a little bit more on the side of caution as well. That bylaw was ultimately struck down by the courts just back in June or July of this year.
I appreciate that. I'd like to, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks about that, but thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Go ahead, Counsel O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the clerk. I thought I read earlier, but I can't seem to find it again. What is the timeframe for sign removal?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe, Justin, was it two days?
I think it's 48 hours.
Yeah, through you, I believe it was two days after the election.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Counsel Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have to go to the 45 days, or can we leave it at 35? I would prefer that we leave it at 35.
That's, the clerk can answer that?
It's council's decision, just, you know, based on the information I provided and the reasons for the 45, but absolutely.
Okay, we can...
Do I have to make an amendment and ask if...
Yes, you do. If you want 35, you have to put it on the phone.
Can I put, can I like to make a, an amendment that we change it or leave it at 35 days?
Yeah, and do we have a second or for...
Do we have a second or?
Counsel Deditas. Now we're discussing strictly the 35 and 45 days. We currently are 35, this bylaw would change it to 45. So Counsel Decker's saying she wants to leave it at 35. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to that? Go ahead, Counsel Deditas.
Well, I think 35 is plenty of time, and our city never looks junky, so it's always looking beautiful, so 35 days is fine.
Anyone else? Okay, we got a mover and a second or for 35 days?
Can I just put the...
Yeah, yeah, because we're gonna vote on that, and then we'll go back to the whole...
Okay, so through you, Mr. Mayor, so this clause here just essentially allows you to also, when the, the bill comes forward, it would be, we'd vote on it separately, and it would be to, to prove it as amended in accordance with, with this motion here. It's up on the screen there for everyone else.
Yeah, okay, so there's the amendment to go back to our 35. We had any, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, so now we'll do the full motion. As amended. Can I, I got a mover and same mover and a second or, or do we want the same mover and a second or for the full motion? Do you wanna speak to it? Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, just through you, Mr. Mayor, just a question on the, the reason of the reduction of two signs to one sign, the rationale behind that. Again, I envision, because I'm out on the campaign trail a lot, I see a lot of signs where there's two on corner properties. I just think it would be something hard to manage to deal with that, but I'll listen to the rationale first.
Go ahead to the clerk, because I'm sure you've had many discussions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that, that's also for consistency, and I mean, we, given we're, we're at an at-large system, right, so, you know, two signs times potentially however many candidates, it, it could get a bit, a bit crowded, so that, that was the thinking there. It's a bit different if you're in a ward system and your, your focus is a bit more specific, but at an at-large, we just felt that that was a, a good approach to take.
Okay, I, I get, I'm neutral, as long as it's enforced, I have no...
That's the key.
One or two, doesn't matter to me, as long as it's enforced. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a mover and a second or, again, for the whole motion, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Now we're moving on to information respecting ward boundary review. Can I get a mover and a second or for... Counsel Deditas and Counsel Sentence, and the, the reports there, it's open for discussion now. Do you wanna speak to it? Oh, Counsel Hanley, go ahead, it was his move.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, in regards to the, the report as mentioned, I like the report, actually, it's wholesome and that stuff tells us the procedures we'd have to follow in regards to going at large. I'd like counsel to take note of all the municipalities who have done reviews in the last couple of years, and I believe a large majority of them are in a ward system, and the report talks about the expansion of cities, urban boundaries, the demographics of our city, how it's growing in the older lying areas now, and I'm hoping that in the future that the City of Thorold could move to a ward system instead of an at-large to make it for fair representation across our vast municipality.
Who else wants to speak to this, Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hanley, go ahead, Counsel Sentence.
Yeah, I'll support the motion, but I, I, I think Counsel Longo said it's best, I don't know if I'm indifferent or I'm not sure about it, because my fear is, you know, if, if you're from the outskirts, you might not get the same representation as everybody else might want to do it. So I'm not sure about this, but we can certainly look into it. Thank you.
It's only to be received at this point, so if there is...
Yeah, so this report's only being received tonight, just so everybody's aware, and then, I mean, council may decide they don't wanna address this at budget, they want to address two years from now prior to the next election, when there might be a more wholesome idea of what the city looks like two years from now. So we're just receiving it. Did you wanna comment on that, Counsel DeAngelo?
I think, because our term's almost done in a year here, I think it, it's best to refer that to the next council's strategic planning session, which should usually be done in the first part of that, and they could take this information and then go forward with that. I, I think that, just to refer it to budget doesn't really help it, I think it needs to go elsewhere. Unless this council plans on doing something this term, I think it, it needs to be identified as a strategic item for discussion, and then that next council could determine it and get it, if they chose to move forward with it, to get it into the proper timeframe for it to happen for the next election.
Counsel Hanley, are you okay with that?
Not dealing with it at all during the budget?
Not this budget, it's gonna refer to the next council to deal with in their strategic plan, and as part of that, that way it'll still give them the time to put anything in place that they need prior to the next election.
Yep, yep, that is, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Hopefully whoever gets elected next time wants to deal with the issue, will find out then, but I'm good with that.
Okay, Counsel Deroz?
Yeah, I'm just good with accepting it for information purposes. The one, the one thing I think is a drawback would be, there's gonna be some areas that only has one person running, okay?
No, but all that will get...
Do they get a claim because...
The next council and the review will deal with that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I kinda, and, and me, I look at the cost too, I, I, I don't know, but...
So we're just accepting.
But it would be an advantage to someone like me who lives out in the country, right? But, but I don't think it's, it's the right way to go, but that's, he nor there will lead for the next council.
We're accepting this, and then it can be staff direction to look at as wholesome as part of the next strategic plan, okay? Okay, we had a mover and a second or, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Respecting the city's noise bylaw, CLK 19-2025, can I get a mover and a second or for this? Counsel Hanley, can, take your hand down so I know that, and if you put it up again, okay, that's good. Can I get a mover and a second or for this one? Counsel Deditas and Counsel Decker. Nicholas, you're here to answer any questions regarding that? Is there any questions for the clerk? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Audit RFP award, DF 34-2025, can I get a mover and a second or for that, please? Counsel DeAngelo and Counsel Decker, and Maria's here to answer any questions regarding that report. Are there any questions regarding the audit RFP award? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Insurance renewal, 2026, can I get a mover and a second or? Counsel Longo, I have, can I get a second or, please? Counsel Sentence, and Maria's here, go ahead, Counsel Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make a comment, I wanna commend staff here for the great relationship we have with BFL Canada, the work they've done with them over the years, and actually coming in with a 4.4% decrease in premiums this year, that's quite an accomplishment, thank you.
That is, it's unheard of in the insurance business. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. DF 37-2025, cancellations, reduction, or refund of taxes under Section 357 and 358 of the Municipal Act 2001, can I get a mover and a second or for this, please? Counsel Decker and Counsel Sentence, and are there any questions for Maria regarding this report? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Maria, you got off light tonight. DS 36-2025, site plan control and delegation of authority, can I get a mover and a second or for that, please? Counsel Decker and, who else? Counsel Deditas. Are there any questions for planning staff regarding site plan control and delegation of authority? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Extension of the City of Thorold Community Improvement Plan, CIP, to June 30th, 2026, can I get a mover and a second or for that? Counsel Sentence and Counsel Decker. Is there any discussion? I think the report's pretty straightforward, I'm happy to see that, because I know from the region, they're hoping to wrap up Thursday, I think around next April, so that'll give us a good lens of where we are from the regional perspective. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Shared service agreement, Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, PWCS 60-2025, can I get a mover and a second or for that? I got Counsel Deditas, Counsel Hanley, you second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Jeff's here to answer any questions. Okay, and Jeff's here to answer any questions. I don't see any. My only question is, with all the changes on the conservation, pending changes, will that change anything, or we wouldn't know yet? Because we might be dealing with a bigger body, that's all I would think.
Yeah, there will be some changes that will happen, but what we're trying to do here is just establish a relationship with the local people who are familiar with the local issues, so that if we do need their services, we can call on them to help us.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS 652025, purchase of a 420XE Caterpillar back home. Can I get a mover and a second here, please? Counsel Decker and Counsel O'Hare. Jeff's here for any questions regarding the purchase of the back home. I don't see any. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. PWCS 702025, 2025 event summary and 26 approval. Can I get a mover and a second here, please? Counsel O'Hare and Counsel Sentence. Any questions or discussion? Go ahead, Counsel Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend Jacob and his team for a great, great year with all the events that we had, starting with our Earth Day to our Market, Canada Day, Santa Claus Parade. Great job.
I agree.
Keep it up.
And one thing that I want to say, and I think we all noticed it during the Santa Claus Parade, is every year we hold these events, the crowds are getting bigger, and the community's responding, and there's nothing but positive feedback. So it's all, it's a great, it's great. Okay, we had a mover and a second here. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to ask a quick question, because it came up a few council meetings ago, the candidate celebrations. We were going to get an update, like a review of how things went and what we're going to do in the future. And one of the things that I'm really asking about is, we subcontracted some work out that we were told was, would now be done internally. Is that still going to be the plan moving forward in 2026?
I'll let Jacob answer that.
Is there specific work you're referring to? I'm not
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll be very specific. We had some help the last number of years lining up entertainment, but we were told that it would eventually be done internally by staff to save some money. So I'm just wondering how we're progressing there.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. This past year, Canada Day, all bands were contracted through myself as staff. We didn't rely on any external booking agencies or anyone to move that work to a third party. That's also the plan going forward.
Okay, that's great to know. I just was under the impression that last year we still used an outside source for that, but glad to hear we're doing it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counsel DeAngela.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to offer kudos to Jacob. I think in his team, what I like in, that I discussed with him numerous times going to different events, is that he's really giving thought process to some of the requirements for the event. And I'm going to use an example such as barriers, to purchase those, that we have them on-site, and we can use them for future events as part of the budget, so it's not an additional cost every year, but it's something we have. And then when we have other events, they could use that, is that, that's part of our support of it. So using part of the budget to attain items that are going to be used multiple years is good fiscal responsibility and showing that it's a good management of the funds that you're allocated through your budget. So I do want to give him credit, to him and his team, for doing an excellent job of thinking of the things that make a difference going forward and not spending it twice. So again, to me, that's utilizing funds wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had a mover and a second here. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Pine Street and Sullivan Avenue Parking Restrictions. Can I get a mover and a second here for this report, please? Counsel Decker and Counsel Sentence. I think that we're here, are you here to answer any questions? All right. So Sean's here. If we have any questions on this report, this was a report that was brought forward because of businesses that were concerned of people parking there all day and there being no parking for businesses. Is there any discussion? I think it's a good report, but it's up to council. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Civic Recognition Event, PWCS 752025. Can I get a mover and a second here? Again, I got Counsel Sentence and Counsel DeAngela. And this one here, we got decisions to make, I think. Let me call it up. Yeah, there's three, three there. The, during council meeting, a ceremony event, which is just more of a social, and then a gala event. The only thing I can say is, prior to COVID, we were, we were going to have an award ceremony that was going to follow number two. And what happened, and I think they had everything ready to go, and then COVID hit, and the reason it didn't happen because of COVID, but the, it was that it was a one-per-council-term event. So when you look at, I'll use counsel, number two as an, as an advan, it's 10,000, but if you spread it over to four years, you know, it's 25. Could we do it like that in the budget, Maria said? And that's how it was run. But I'll let counsel speak to it. Go ahead, Counsel DeAngela.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I would support option number two, an award ceremony event, something less formal than a dinner.
Yeah.
The costs are a little better, and you can manage it. That's what we did in the past when we got this event going in its originality. The only thing I'd like to see is it to be done every two years, and massage that allocation of 10,000 to see if we could do it within a smaller amount, but have it every two years. I think recognizing our citizens is very, very important. They do a lot of volunteer work, come up with a lot of great ideas, participate on different committees. And, yeah, recognizing once every four years, to me, I think it's more important to recognize them on a more regular basis of every two years, not necessarily filling in all 15 spots if no one's applied or no one's put their name for it. So that could also help with some of the costs associated with this. But I think to recognize our volunteers who do a lot of community work at zero-dollar cost, you know, to show our appreciation from a city standpoint goes a long way of patting them on the back. I'd like to see it moved to two years. Again, I know we're only going to have one in this term, so if you want to put that as another item on the strategic plan, is move forward with the one for this year, put it into the strategic plan for the next council to decide if they want to go two. I'm okay with that also, but I think two's a better for me. Thank you.
So if we, we know we want to have one before the end of this term, right? And then, and then the next council decides if they want to have it every two years, I think that, I think it's a good idea personally, but I'll let Counsel Sentence speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got no problem with every two years. That'd be fantastic. But I think we should keep this wheel in motion, because I think that kind of got lost last time. So I'm not pushing anything on the next council, but I think it should be, okay, let's do it next year, hopefully as soon as we can, Jacob, so it's not too close to election time. But I think we should keep this ball rolling, that it's an event, we can say it's an event. If you want to go every two years, then we go every two years. Council cannot cancel it if they want to the next one, but it seems to have gotten lost in the, in the system when we let it down. So I agree with you, every two years, but I would like to keep this as, keep the ball rolling, that this is an event that's going to happen, unless somebody decides they don't want it to happen.
Anyone, go ahead, Counsel De.
I agree with Ken. And I'm okay with leaving it for every year, especially to see how the first one goes.
It's not every year. It's once a term.
Once a term. That's what I mean, once a term. That's what, once a term. I think it's good to, more people get involved and see if we get the ball rolling, and it's good for the community.
Anyone else?
Just to be clear, my suggestion was to put it to the strategic planning, which is done in the first year of the next council. So if they want to make an amendment to it, they can decide at that
Yeah, we'll do it as this, once a term. If they want to make an amendment, then they can make it. How's that?
I concur.
Okay, so that's
I think that suggestion should be brought forward.
Yeah, so we got a mover and a second here, and then, so it's going to be once a term, but referred to the next strategic plan if they want to change it. They can.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. So maybe for Maria, our Director of Finance, so according to the report, 7,000 has been encumbered to the end of 2025. Believe if option B is 10,000, we would need additional funding. How would you phrase that, Maria? Would it be approved or referred to 2026 budget or pre-approved?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Since the event won't be happening this year, I would refer to 2026 budget.
Yeah, so we'll need that difference in the budget, but the event won't take place. That's
Would we need, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, for Jacob, is that okay, like in terms of you starting planning with it being referred to the next year's budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's, that would be perfectly acceptable.
Okay, I'll just draft up the motion just one second.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to select option two, and the difference is going to be referred to budget. And then the next council and the strategic plan can decide if they want to maintain this frequency or make it more often. Okay? I got to keep them busy on here.
I've just added option B.
Option B, and the additional funding of 3,000 be referred to the budget. Okay? Everybody good with that? We had a mover and a second here. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. What?
That's on the amendment.
That's on the amendment. Okay, and now the full motion as amended. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay? We got motions before, is there any notices of motion? Go ahead, Counsel DeRose.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've got that two I wanted to present. Number one is support for individuals affected by intimate partner violence. And the second one is the consideration of municipal security and safety services for Thorold.
Okay, so that, well, you'll work with the clerk.
Next six weeks or whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, motions. Counsel Hanley, call on you for your motion respecting Christmas lighting in the Battle of Beaver Dams Park. And do you have a second here?
Counsel Dedevidis.
Counsel Dedevidis. I knew he would be a second here for that.
I'm actually, I brought it forward on his behalf, Mr. Mayor, but I'm more than happy to put it to the floor. Whereas the Battle of Beaver Dams Park is an important community space located in close proximity to Thorold's downtown core, and showcasing the park through a Christmas lighting display would not only highlight its natural beauty and cultural significance, but also draw residents and visitors into the area, thereby creating opportunities to support and stimulate local businesses during the holiday season. Now therefore be resolved that the corporation of the City of Thorold and Axis follows. That city staff be directed to appear and bring forward for council's consideration during the 2026 budget deliberations, the projected cost of installing a Christmas lighting display in the Battle of Beaver Dams Park for the 2026 Christmas holiday season. And just a comment, I think it's a great endeavor. It was a great idea by Counsel Dedevidis. Seeing we utilize the park as it has been utilized throughout the spring, the summer, and almost into the fall, up into our Christmas parade, that having some lighting during the Christmas season only enhance our downtown and the beautification of all the work we've done over the last three years.
Thank you very much, Counsel Hanley. Did you want to speak to that, Counsel Dedevidis?
I just want to add, it's great for the community. When we had that event in the park, that Nella brought forward to the event committee with Santa Claus, meet Santa Claus. I saw everybody in the park. Everybody enjoyed themselves so much. And I can visualize people walking through the park, having a hot chocolate, looking at the Christmas lights. It just, it just makes sense of doing it. Other municipalities hang nice Christmas decor all around. And I think it's important for us, especially when we're growing, to utilize that Beaver Dams Park and make it the anchor of all the parks in Thorold.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried.
Sorry, for the last one, civic recognition, did we get a second for the amendment and
Yes, it was the same.
The same?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we just confirm that?
Okay, the last one, the clerk's just telling me, which I thought, the amendment and the motion are the same mover and second here. Is every
Was that, I had Counsel Sentence and Counsel DeAngela. Is that, okay? I just wanted to confirm for a minute.
We just wanted to make sure. I thought so, and I just want to verify it for the record. Okay? Okay, 14-2, Counsel DeRose. I'll call on you for your motion respecting opposition passage of Ontario's Bill 60. And do you have a second here? Counsel Dedevidis, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas stable, secure, and affordable housing is foundational to the individual well-being, neighborhood stability, and the overall health of the municipality, whereas the changes to the Residential Tenancies Act introduced through the passage of Ontario's Bill 60 have raised significant concerns among tenant advocates, housing providers, and municipal leaders regarding the potential for weakened tenant protections, reduced housing affordability, and increased vulnerability to displacement. And whereas municipalities bear the direct impacts of housing instability, including increased demand for social services, shelter systems, and emergency supports, and therefore have a strong interest in ensuring that provincial legislation strengthens rather than undermines tenants' rights and housing security. Now therefore be it resolved that the corporation of the City of Thorold and Axis follows. That City of, the Thorold City Council formally expresses its strong opposition to the passage of Ontario's Bill 60, given the concerns that its changes to the Residential Tenancies Act will weaken protections for tenants, increase housing instability, and place additional pressure on municipal supports and services. And two, that the city be directed, the city staff be directed to circulate this motion to all Niagara municipalities, the region of Niagara, the Office of MPP, Jeff Birch, and the Office of Premier Doug Ford. Thank you.
And you had a second here, and is there anyone who wants to speak to this? Go ahead, Counsel Sentence.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yeah, I fully support this. I think I saw an interview where the problem was that there was no consultation with groups and that they felt they had no voice in it. But there is another side to it, where, you know, there are some bad apples, like they said, tenants, that you can't get rid of. And I'm talking about Counsel Dedevidis, can I speak to them at the Affordable Housing. It's hard to, to get rid of somebody, rid of, to get somebody out who is, is a bad apple, but 100% I'll support this. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we got a mover and a second here. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Counsel DeRose, calling you for motion respecting animals and pets in Thorold cemeteries. And do you have a second here? Counsel Dedevidis? Go ahead, Counsel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas at its regular council meeting on May 20, 2025, Thorold City Council approved bylaw 342025, the city cemetery bylaw. And whereas the cemetery bylaw currently permits animals in city-owned or city-operated cemeteries under certain conditions, now therefore be resolved that the corporation of the City of Thorold and Axis follows, that city staff be directed to update bylaw 432025, being the city cemetery bylaw, to prohibit animals, pets from entering or remaining in city-owned or city-operated cemeteries, and to ensure appropriate signage is installed. That the revised bylaw be brought to council at the first meeting in January. And can I speak to it, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Yeah, I asked staff about six months ago, where the note, since I was a kid, I remember there was a sign on the front of the cemetery, no dogs allowed. I asked them where it went, and I was never told that their intention was to change the bylaw. And I was told that it's in the, the bylaws listed outside the administration office. And I, I was told that it's in the, the bylaws listed outside the administration office. Dogs are allowed in every green space in the town, in the City of Thorold. We have 600, a 600,000-plus-dollar new dog park. To, dogs pee and poo. Doesn't matter if they're on a leash, not on a leash, they pee and poo. Do you want them pooing or peeing on your loved ones, grave site? It's sacrilegious. And I was a little disappointed because I did send to staff questions back in September 25th, and they never got answered. But I do want to say, on September 14th, Sunday, September 14th, I got five calls Sunday night from residents. One happened to be my retired teacher sister, who's in her 70s. And she was very distraught, as were the other four people. There was two people training dogs at the cemetery. And I just think this is totally wrong. There's every other green space in Thorold to bring your dog. I love dogs, I have dogs, but this, this is wrong. And I think we need to correct this.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I disagree. The reasons I disagree with this is, I've asked staff if there was any instances of, you know, a problem with poop and stuff like that. And they said, no, just wild animals. If, if people are training their dogs out there, then bylaw should be called. If they're not on a leash, and they should be fined and punished. I get that. I understand that. My problem is, you have service dogs, you have therapy dogs. Again, there's wild animals in there through all the time. We have a leash and poop policy where you have to abide by it. Policing it? How do you police this? Does staff go out and tell somebody? And I'll give, give examples. You have a spouse out there, and if you know, you know. If you have dogs, some of us feel differently about dogs, some people don't. They become part of your family. And we're going to tell a spouse, or somebody out there, or a, a family member that you have to leave because you have a dog that's on a leash and controlled, and you're, you're responsible for it, which I think most people in Thorold are. And there's a lot of dog owners in Thorold. So, we have all those things in place. There are places like dioceses of, Catholic Diocese of Niagara and Hamilton. I asked this question, too. They allow dogs in their private cemeteries. You have to be respectful. They have to be on a leash. You have to clean up after yourself. I don't want to be sacrilegious. I don't, I don't want to, I'm not going to let my dog do its business. But there are animals that do that during the day, during the night, they're already. So, again, I do not want to tell staff, go out and tell those people to leave. If they don't leave, you have to go and get bylaw and tell bylaw, and you get ticketed because you're grieving out there, because the dog is part of your family. And we, we have that bylaw in place right now that allows you for respectful leash and proper poop and maintenance policy. So, I, I won't support this for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hanley, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can't agree with those statements that, since we have wild animals out there pooping and being, that we will let tame animals out there too. That's not comparing apples to apples. Must take into consideration, although I read, yeah, dogs, dogs are right civic area. And why? Because people, like claustrophobia, phobia.
Jim, you're coming in and out here.
And they have poop.
Jim, you're breaking up.
Hello?
Yeah, we'll try you. I'll come back to you again. Go ahead, Counselor Decker.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I won't support this either. I go out to the cemetery weekly, and I do see people out there with their pets visiting their loved ones, and they're on leashes. And I walk around that cemetery, and I have never, ever seen dog poop anywhere on the ground. I think people are respectful when they're out there. And a lot of people that do go to visit their loved ones, those dogs were part of their family. So, I, I don't know if Mark or the cemetery staff can answer this, but how many incidences have you had where, where there's been? Poop, I mean, I was just out there.
It's reverbing on his speaker.
I, I was just out there last week putting up some Christmas stuff at my mom and dad's, and there was three dogs on leashes there with their owner visiting. And the dogs were very controlled. And, and honestly, people are, usually that are out there are old enough to know when they're out there, that if the dog does poop, they pick up their poop and throw it away. So I just can't, I would hate to tell my neighbors or relatives, my nephew, that, no, he can't bring his dog on a leash if he wants to go visit his grandmother and grandfather or whatever. So no, I can't support this.
Thank you, Counselor Dedevitas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I struggled with this decision. I'm a dog lover, and I have always had dogs in my life. So this wasn't easy for me. So I decided to go to Holy Rosary Church, talk to Father Giannis, spent about an hour there. Went to St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, spent about an hour there. I listened to people in my community, all different types. What I heard consistently is that many residents want a cemetery to remain a sacred, quiet place, free from pets. Many told me they could feel safer and more at peace knowing dogs were not permitted. A cemetery should be a place for reflection, respect, comfort for everyone. We are fortunate in Thorold to have parks, we even have a dog park, where pets are welcome, and families with dogs have plenty of spaces to enjoy community. For this reason, I'll be voting tonight to prohibit pets in our cemetery. This does not include service dogs. They are always welcome in our community.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I won't support this motion. I just don't want to tell a resident that, you know what? You and your loved, beloved pet cannot go to the cemetery to sit or be with your loved one that passed away. This is something, as Counselor Decker pointed out, is very emotional, very caring for the family. And to take that away from someone is wrong. So I won't support it.
Counselor, Counselor Hanley.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now, so go ahead.
Well, I'm going to support Counselor DeRose's motion. I, for one, believe that, I was trying to say that, you know, people have phobias. They have claustrophobia, they have arachnophobia, the fear of spiders, the fear of enclosed spaces. And I know people personally that have the fear of dogs and who visit the cemetery. And when I told them that, the possibility that they could be out there visiting loved ones, and a, and a dog may be present in the park, actually triggered the phobia almost on them. And I know people that have phobias that start tremors, start seizures, actually. And I don't believe a cemetery is a place, wild animals is not a reason that there's wild animals out there pooping and peeing, that it should be okay for other dogs. Have you gone through or maybe forward a question to city staff? How often before an event on a Wednesday do they have to go through the park almost on a daily basis at Battle of Beaver Dams Park picking up dog excrement? Not only in the Battle of Beaver Dams Park and in other areas of Thorold, when staff are out there. And I know firsthand from talking to staff that that's an issue, that before events, they got to go there and clean up all the dog do that's in the park. So, I see where it happens. And to think that we already had bylaws in place in regards to dogs pooping or peeing in public, and how are you going to enforce it? Well, we don't enforce it in our downtown area, in the rural areas. Now how are we going to enforce it in the cemetery? I don't know if anybody in Thorold or ever heard of a fine being issued by the city to someone because their dog pooped in the park and they didn't pick it up. And I could probably confer that, we could ask bylaw tonight and that stuff. How many fines they've given up for that? I bet you it's far and few between. So, I'm going to support Counselor DeRose. Cemetery is art for pets. Service dogs, as Counselor Dedevitas says, more than welcome. We have plenty of green spaces. They build dog parks for dogs, they build cemeteries for humans. And I believe we should respect the faith and ban dogs from being a part or in the cemetery. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions for staff. It's saying here that in May of this year, we approved a new bylaw. So, just want to unders, make sure I understand what's going on here. Previous to May of, May 20th, 2025, dogs were not allowed in a cemetery? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. However, I will say that we've had regular dog walkers using the cemetery space for decades. And it was in conversation with them, and in conversation with our staff through, throughout the process of reworking the bylaws, where staff acknowledged that we don't have any issues in the cemetery. There, the walkers have been going there for years.
Good, I appreciate that. The next line of the motion, it says, would permit animals in city-owned, city-operated cemeteries under certain conditions. What are those conditions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When we updated the bylaws, we ensured that it acknowledged that there are municipal bylaws with respect to poop and scoop, so that all dogs must, or all pets must be on a leash. And the walkers or the owners of the pets must abide by the municipal bylaws related to pet, to poop and scoop, poop and scoop, sorry.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. I'm kind of torn here. I really, my personal feeling is I really don't have an opinion one way or the other here. It doesn't really bother me, but I can understand it does bother some people. But not sure how I'll vote.
Anyone else? Just a couple of comments I want to make, because I did some research, too. And I know service dogs are allowed because I think that's a provincially, is that done under provincial legislation? I did a lot about, and there's a lot of bylaws, that dogs are not allowed on the grass areas, which would alleviate the concerns that Counselor DeRose had. They're only allowed on the paths and the roads. And that's in a lot of, a lot of them, but not all of them. There's some that don't allow animals, there's some that do. But the most I've seen where, where they do allow dogs is that they're not allowed on the green space. They're only allowed on the road and paths. And so, you know, because that opened my eyes, too, like Counselor Longo said, because I was having a hard time coming to grips with that.
You can't, you can't police that, Mr. Mayor.
You can't police if there's going to be a dog there or not.
You can police if there's a dog, because it's going to stand out.
Did you want to comment on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up with your comment. You're absolutely right. And if it would help council, I just wanted to provide a snapshot of those that are allowing pets, whether it's on, or, sorry, they're all on leash. And you're right, many do reference the pathway. So, currently, the Catholic Diocese, both of Niagara and Hamilton, allow it. Niagara Falls, Hamilton Municipal Cemeteries, Lincoln, West Lincoln, Welland. Fort Erie acknowledges that they only allow service animals. And St. Catherine's, the current bylaw does not allow pets. But they've acknowledged that they've had walkers in there for years, so they've actually put up signage acknowledging that all pets must be on a leash. And they're currently undergoing their bylaw change as well. So the greater majority of municipalities in the Niagara region are allowing pets as long as they're leashed, and in many cases on the pathway.
Yeah, most of them I've seen, don't, they, they're not allowed on the grass areas.
Can I talk again, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you can go ahead. You can go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the fact about the pathways and the green space. I owned a dog for years, and know what? My dog never once stopped on the pathway to do his thing. He always went on the green area. I'm sure to counter Dedevitas and anybody else who owns a dog will tell you that. I've never had my dog, when I had one poop on the gravel road, he pooped on the grass. And he pooped on, and he peed on the grass. He didn't pee on the walkway, and that's what's going to happen at the cemetery. You going to have someone out there to see that the dog doesn't go on the green space? Every dog owner in council chambers would probably agree with me. Your dog don't go poop on the road, and you don't go poop on the pathway. He goes poop on the grass, and he goes pee on the grass. And that's the same thing that's going to happen at the cemetery. Whether you pick it up or not, they're not peeing or pooping on the pathway.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken? Go ahead, Counselor Decker.
I just have a question. If the bylaw was passed already that we're allowing pets in the cemetery, would this not be considered then a reconsideration vote?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My opinion on that is that it, it wouldn't be. Practically speaking, we, we do bylaw amendments all the time. I see a reconsideration as something that has to go to the heart of the actual initial decision, which would be to pass the bylaw itself. So I, I see this as it's an amendment to the bylaw, if council so chooses, just in line with every other amendment that gets done.
Go ahead, Counselor O'Hair. And anyone else that has a last word to say? Get ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to say that we've heard that staff has found no issue with poop and, and having to clean up these messes. So I think we're looking more at a tempest in a teapot here, that we should be a little bit more open to allowing those who have, who have loving pets that are part of their family. And we should allow that. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
I'm requesting a recorded vote, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, no problem. Go ahead, Counselor DeRose.
Just a question for Counselor O'Hair. You seem to have a lot of opinions on the cemetery. How many family members do you have buried there?
Okay, that's.
No, no, I want to know how many family members do you have buried there?
Nothing to do with the bylaw.
Zero, right? Zero.
This is impersonal.
That's out of order.
Trying to change your cemetery.
That's got nothing to do with what we're dealing with, okay? Now, anyone else want to speak before? It's going to be a recorded vote. Counselor Hanley, I think, called for a recorded vote. Before we do that, I'll ask Counselor DeRose, because I personally struggled with this, but if we had dogs just on path and roads, would you be acceptable to that?
Mr. Mayor, it's too hard to police. I've talked to a ton of people. I've talked to people like Mike did at Counselor Dedevitas at the church, the priests. No, the only thing I would allow is service dogs. You can add that to the.
You can't stop.
No, and I love service dogs, and that's, that's different. Any other pets, when there's people training dogs there, they get the wrong message from signage. It's not there anymore.
That's against the existing bylaw, okay?
There's no one there to enforce it on a Sunday night, Mr. Mayor. And people have to see that when they go see their family.
Anyway, I asked you a question, you said no. Okay, because if you allowed that, I'd support it, but I can't support it without that. Okay, anyway.
Just like Counselor Hanley said, the, the dog's going to go to grass. My dogs don't poo and pee on the road, they go to grass.
If they're on the road, and they went to the edge of the road and it was cleaned up, they aren't running through where the, where the headstones are.
But why even put, put?
Anyway, that's the end of it. Do you have a final word, and I'm calling the vote?
Just, just the final word, just to those instances and to anybody who might think we're being sacrilegious or being, the dioceses of, Catholic Diocese of Niagara and Hamilton allow this on a path, but they allow this. So, not trying to be rude, not trying to be sacrilegious, just trying to be compassionate to the people who are out there and what dogs mean to some people. That's all. Thank you.
We'll call the vote.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, go ahead, Counselor.
I had a question, just for clarity. On the path, in mausoleum, be allowed to be around the mausoleum there?
Paths and trails, I wouldn't, they wouldn't, I don't think be allowed in the mausoleum. Am I correct?
Not in the mausoleum, but there's sidewalks around. I'm just trying to get the definition of a path.
A path and a walkway, would I would say would include a walkway, but not inside the mausoleum. Am I correct, Mark?
It's through you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct. When I said pathway, I typically meant the roadways. They use the roadways walking around the cemetery.
Okay. Are we ready to call the vote? Go ahead.
Can I, can I, just for clarification?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Hanley.
How about if someone's buried in the mausoleum, and they want to bring their dog in? Because the guy that used to own the dogs in there buried inside a queue. They're not allowed in the mausoleum? Through you, appropriate staff. So we're going to allow them to go to a cemetery outside? But if a pet lover wants to bring his dog into a mausoleum, he can't do it?
Mark?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great question. We actually have not run into that situation. So no, currently, the pets are maintained to, or kept to the roadways of the cemetery.
Well, my mother used to be a dog lover. What happens if I get a dog? I'm not going to be allowed to go into mausoleum. What happens if I get a dog, I'm not going to be allowed to go in the mausoleum? Through you, Mr. Mayor? The appropriate staff? So this isn't for everybody, then?
The, it depends on the, on what gets passed, Counselor Hanley. Okay? Right now, there's, the motion on the floor is to have no animals in. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say one thing. My decision wasn't based on faith alone. I did talk to Father Yannis at Holy Rosary for an hour, and he's totally against it. I did go to St. Andrews, talked to him for over an hour, they were totally against it. But that didn't sway my vote. All the other citizens that I spoke to swayed my vote. And like I said, I'm a dog lover, and if you have, an older person, if you want your dog so bad, become a therapy dog. That, my vote, my vote is because I spoke to a lot of people in our community, and that's what they wanted. So it wasn't by faith, it was by doing research and pounding the concrete.
Thank you. Go.
Okay, so Counselor Hanley requested a court, a recorded vote.
Yes.
So the mover was Counselor DeRose, second here was Counselor Dedavidas, so we will start with Counselor O'Hare. Your vote, sorry?
Opposed.
Counselor D'Angelo?
I'm not going to argue the process here, but it should have been Carmen DeRose voting second, but we always change the rules on recorded votes, but I'm opposed. Oh, sorry, I'm in favor of the motion.
Counselor Sennett?
Opposed.
Counselor Hanley?
In favor.
Counselor DeRose?
In favor.
Counselor Longo?
In favor.
Counselor Decker?
Opposed.
Counselor Dedavidas?
In favor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Opposed.
Okay, so the vote is five in favor, four against, so that carries.
Okay, we're moving on to statement by counselors, and I have Counselor Dedavidas regarding an event to benefit Thorold Minor Hockey.
Yeah, this is a great story for our community and for all Thorold Minor Hockey. Thorold's huge into hockey. We're doing a fundraiser December the 12th, and we're going to have a hip band, hip machines going to be playing there. All the expenses are covered. Thorold Minor Hockey has zero expenses. It's free for the people of Thorold. All the community can come out, watch this fantastic band, have a great experience, and all the bars proceeds are going to Thorold Minor Hockey. So it's going to be a great night out for the community, and I encourage everybody to come and support Thorold Minor Hockey, December the 12th at the Moose and Goose.
December 12th, and what time does this start, Counselor?
It starts at eight, eight o'clock, the show starts at nine, and it's all over by 11:30 quarter 12. And what a great band to do that, a great Canadian band, hip.
Very good. Counselor Sennett, regarding a new Kiwanis group that has been started.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, Rick Wesleyk has started a new Kiwanis group. I remember the name from when I was a kid. We meet once a month, and they're looking for new members to get their membership up, and everything they do is to help kids in many ways, school-wise, sports-wise, and empower kids. So anybody who's interested, contact Rick Wesleyk, myself, and we're starting a club. Thank you.
And the first meeting's going to be in January, am I correct?
That is the charter night in January on the 7th, so yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to, before I ask for a mover and a second here to go into closed session, I would like to remind you of your obligations respecting closed session. Those who are participating in the closed session must ensure that no other person is in the location from which they are taking part in the meeting or make appropriate arrangements so that any other persons cannot see or hear any of the confidential deliberations taking place. If this is not possible, you must withdraw from the meeting until it is reconvened in open session. Council staff and everyone present during the closed session have an obligation to ensure that what is discussed in closed session is kept confidential. And you put that on the screen and read while we're going into closed session.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the council do now move into closed session to receive confidential information respecting, one, a matter respecting personal matters.
No, we did that. No, we don't have to do that.
You're quite right. So we don't need to go into, for that one, so we can strike that. I'll just strike that out now. Okay, so matter respecting personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees under section 239-2B of the Municipal Act 2001, and matter respecting litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board under section 239-2E of the Municipal Act Lakeview Cemetery.
Okay. Can I get a mover and a second here to go into closed session? Counselor Dedavidas, Counselor Decker, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. So give us a few minutes, because Counselor Hanley's got to switch.
Are we staying here?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yeah, don't take me one minute, I'll be done.
You got to switch right to the next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm ready in the, I'll be in the process in 30 seconds.